Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I will call our Bloomington City Council meeting to order. Tonight is Monday, August 26, 2024. Thank you all for being here this evening and for watching online. We will start our meeting as we always do. If you are able, please stand, take off any lid you might have, and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Once again, thanks to everybody who's here this evening on this steamy August night, and thanks to the folks watching at home. Our first order of business, as it always is beyond the Pledge of Allegiance, is approval of our agenda and our agenda tonight, this evening council. We have three introductory items. The first is a proclamation for our Born Again Jocks, Born Again Jocks Week, which is coming up. Item 2.2 is an update on our Bloomington Tomorrow Together Strategic Planning process. Item 2.3 is an update on the Community Health and Wellness Center. Under our Consent Business, we have 11 items on the consent calendar this evening, and Councilmember Lohman has our Consent Business. Thank you, Councilmember Lohman, for doing that. Under item four, our Hearings, Resolutions, and Ordinances, we have one public hearing tonight that is regarding a partial vacation of a public drainage and utility easement. We get to item five, our organizational business, and we've got five items there. The first is an update on our cannabis business registration standards and zoning. Study item, where we'll be talking about short-term rentals. Another item, item 5.3, where we're going to talk about maximizing sales tax revenues. Item 5.4 will be our City Council Policy and Issue Update, and we will actually end our meeting tonight with item 5.5 with a closed session, a fire station acquisition discussion. So item 5.5 will be a closed session. We'll have to clear the council chambers for that closed session of the city council. Council, any questions or additions to tonight's agenda? If not, I would move tonight's agenda as stated.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve tonight's agenda as stated. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Councilmember Carter, I think, is on her way downstairs. First order is item 2.1 is a proclamation for our Bloomington Born Again Jocks Week, and I'm going to head down to the podium. Item 2.1 is a proclamation for Bloomington Born Again Jocks 40th Anniversary Year, and we've got a bunch of our Born Again Jocks here. Everybody come on up. Why don't you join me here? It's a much better camera shot if we can get everybody on camera. It's always about the cameras. Put that right there. That's perfect. It is great to have everybody here with us tonight. Thank you for being here tonight. And this proclamation is for Bloomington Born Again Jocks 40th Anniversary Year, August 21 through 31, 2024. Whereas the Bloomington Born Again Jocks, the B-A-Js, was founded in 1984, and whereas the B-A-J organization is a volunteer organization in the city of Bloomington and has grown in membership from about 20 men to the current 500 men, and whereas the B-A-J organization offers sporting opportunities in softball, golf, bowling, tennis, bocce ball, biking, and volleyball, and whereas the B-A-Js contribute to the Bloomington community in many ways through scholarships for our Kennedy and Jefferson students and by donating to the local Bloomington Athletic Association, and whereas the B-A-J organization serves the greater Bloomington community with an opportunity for fitness, fellowship, and good-natured competition with a spirit of friendship. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Tim Bussi, do hereby proclaim the week of August 26 through 31 as Born Again Jocks Week. In doing so, the city acknowledges their 40th anniversary and their many contributions to our city and its citizens dated this 26th day of August 2024. Now, when I read this "founded in 1984," I realize, my goodness, that was my first year out of high school, and has it been 40 years? My goodness, already. I can't even begin to imagine that. And I am not yet a Born Again Jock. I was never a jock to begin with, so that wouldn't work for me. So, but very pleased and happy and proud to recognize your organization because I know the work that you do across the community, and I know the opportunities that you provide for folks, and I'm very grateful and appreciative. I'm going to turn the microphone over now to Lyle Ablen, who's going to talk just a bit about our friends, the Born Again Jocks. Come on in, Lyle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council members. Yes, we are 40 years old this year. Like you said, we are originated in 1984, and, Mr. Mayor, you don't have to be a jock to be a B-A-Jer, okay? We are often wannabe jocks, okay? But yes, we have about 500 members. We offer eight different athletic opportunities, and some of us participate in one, some participate in four, five, and so forth. But we do offer a very nice, sociable, sport-like opportunity to be friendly and develop some camaraderie. Our ages range from about 57 this year to 93, so we service the entire community and so forth. One of the things we're most proud of is that we do give back to the community. We have an annual pancake breakfast every first Sunday of October held at the Bloomington Event Center, and from the proceeds from that, we give back to the community in the form of scholarships to the athletes at Kennedy and Jefferson. We give a very sizable donation to the Bloomington Athletic Association, which is the BAA that we most of us know it as. It serves the younger youth, the younger athlete of Bloomington. They use it for scholarships, for equipment, and for whatever they need to meet their budget and so forth. So, we're proud of that. Yes, we do have 500 members, and we intend to grow. So, if you notice in front of us, we have a website. We'd encourage the public to go to the website, learn about our eight sports, learn about our organization, and then join us. Again, I'd like to say thank you to the council people, thank you to the members, and, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Okay.
Thank you so very much, Lyle. Congratulations to you and to all of you and to all the Born Again Jocks in Bloomington. Thank you for your commitment to the community, and thank you for your zest and your willingness to take it on. I mean, to have fun is great. I'm so glad that you're doing this, and I'm glad you're part of our community. So, congratulations, and now comes the best part. We have to take the picture. We get to do the grip and grip. Item 2.2 on our agenda is an update on our Bloomington Tomorrow Together Strategic Plan. And I know we've got a number of staff members here tonight who are going to participate in this, and so I'm looking forward to hearing more about it. Who's going to lead us off? Good evening, Caitlin. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, I have with me members of the BTT Coordination Team. If you guys want to stand up, we're here to present the most recent quarters, updates for the Bloomington Tomorrow Together Strategic Plan. While I'm waiting for the slides to come up, I can quick introduce our coordination team and kind of what our role is. We help facilitate quarterly group check-ins with initiative owners, promote BTT both internally and externally, and then help identify opportunities for further innovation with all the initiatives. So, we meet biweekly now and just kind of get together to discuss that, so.
Caitlin, could I ask you just to pull the microphone just a little bit closer? Want to make sure that we don't miss anything here. Thank you.
Perfect. Okay, that's better. All right, you guys can go ahead and sit down. So, we can get started here. Can you move to the next slide? Here we go. So, just kind of an agenda to help guide this presentation tonight. Started out with the introduction of our coordination team. We're going to move into some highlights from the staff updates on their BTT initiatives. We'll preview some upcoming projects for the next quarter and then open it up to any comments and feedback that you all have, but not requesting any specific action tonight. Next slide. And we also just wanted to start by restating the city's mission and values and how they're prioritized with BTT. Mere is the mission of the city to cultivate enduring and remarkable community where people want to be, followed by our values and beliefs and the commitment on our end to not include any program, project, policy, or service that's not consistent with the above core values and aligned with our mission. So, now we can roll into updates under each priority, the first of which is a connected and welcoming community. So, with this priority, we have three major outcomes that we wish to see, which is that people can connect with their neighbors, people are welcomed by the city into the community, and then residents are valued by the community. And so, from that first outcome, we have all of our initiative updates, one of which is from the community asset model, working on implementing GIS to create an introductory and preliminary asset map with our creative placemaking program. We've finished up the engagement plan with a consultant working on that project and completed the selection of an artist engagement team. Highlights also include the development of pop-up and artist-led engagement activities, one which was the more recent Juneteenth event here at Civic Plaza. And then also, under this priority, we have the volunteer management program. Highlights from this initiative included onboarding a full-time volunteer coordinator and then hosting the annual volunteer appreciation event. Under our second priority of the plan, we have that of a healthy community with outcomes that prioritize environmental health, human health, safety, and security. So, with our Energy Action Plan, quarter two saw increased participation in organics recycling, which included the city hosting a compost giveaway, also an increased collection of bulky items for use in recycling, including a baby gear swap. This helped 94 people swap old items for a total of 578 exchanged pounds of baby gear instead of it going to waste in other ways. We also see with solid waste reduction strategies that sustainability work related to the Energy Action Plan initiative includes the distribution of rain barrels and continued efforts of the Sustainability Commission. And then for our Food Access Plan, we're continuing with the RFP process for the completion of the Food Access Map. Then we move on to our third and final priority within the plan, which is a community with equitable economic growth. Outcomes for this include this growth being more equitably distributed, expanded diversity in business ownership, and more equitable job growth. Some highlights from this priority include the Same Facade Improvement Program. This program seeks to facilitate the revitalization of aged commercial nodes within the city. In this past quarter, staff received seven applications that requested a total of 160,000 in funding for a projected total of four and a half million dollars back into the community. And then recently, just last week, under the Workforce Bloomington Framework Initiative, we had the 2024 Group of Bloom and Bloomington interns have their graduation ceremony, so that was fun. And then this next slide here is just an opportunity to show off some fun photos of the hard work that staff and initiative owners have done in the past quarter, but then also to kind of mention where we'll be going next. Going back to that community asset map, we're going to be working with GIS staff to develop an integrated asset map to really connect residents with those resources in the community. There, within the Creative Placemaking Program, we're expecting an additional 15 to 19 artist-led engagement activities. For the Energy Action Plan, we'll be launching energy efficiency pilot programs, which includes the Bloomington Stewards Program and then continued residential energy program outreach. And then finally, for our Traffic Injury Reduction Plan, we'll be seeing the installation of new speed limit signs and public education efforts, and then we'll be seeing pedestrian crossing construction as well. And so, this last slide here is just a list of resources that I've referenced in this presentation. LB City webpages for information on the strategic plan, as well as the public-facing and visio dashboard. And you should all have the full quarter two report in your agenda packets. So, I'll open this up back to you all if you have any comments or questions.
Well, thank you. Thanks for the presentation, and thank you to the team for your work because I know it's on top of everything else. And I know you've got your jobs to do, and then you do this as well. So, I appreciate the effort that you folks all put into this and your acknowledgement that this is an important part of what we're doing here in Bloomington and the work you put into it and the thought behind, obviously, some of these things reflects that very well. So, thank you so very much. Council questions, comments on this? Councilmember Alessandro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, everybody, for being here. Always good to see this. I do believe that there were a couple of items on our dashboard that are either behind schedule or are off schedule somehow, and I don't want to, I don't think we need to go into a lot of detail on those, but I do want to just have an understanding of, and maybe this is for you, Mr. City Manager, just what we think the timeline is for getting those that have been disrupted back on track, if that's something that we can talk to.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, I think the better way to do it is just to have the staff put together a report for you that will follow up with the Bloomington this week and just give you an idea of what we anticipate being the amount of time of delay or time of implementation for some of those initiatives that are not tracking right now. I think council is aware, we've had some turnover in staff, and so, you know, some of this accounts for that. But I appreciate the question, and actually, it's the perfect question for the point that I was going to make in summary to all this. And first of all, thank you, our team, that continues to work on this. The reason that we're here and we're doing this on a quarterly basis is to commit to the council that staff is following through on implementing this plan. This is your plan. It's done in partnership with the community, but this was done at your request, and you own this plan, and we want to make sure you know that we're continuing to move forward on it and that we're focused on outcomes and making sure that we're achieving the vision that you and the community have laid out together. So, we will follow up and get a report on some of the items that aren't quite on track yet.
Additional questions, comments? Well, well done. Thank you. And again, thank you to the team working on this, and I know this goes broadly and deeply within our community and with folks here at City Hall. So, thank you much for the work that's going on. It is greatly appreciated, and it is putting us on track to be a enduring and remarkable community where people want to be. Thank you. Thank you very much. Everybody say it at once, yes. Thank you so much. We will move on to item 2.3, an update on our Community Health and Wellness Center. And our Park and Rec Director, Ann Catry, is going to kick this off and introduce some of our consultants who are going to present as well. Good evening. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Thank you very much. Tonight, we are going to share with you an engagement summary for some early focus groups and community engagement work, and we're going to report on the statistically valid survey and community survey completed earlier this summer. Then we'll show how this engagement work is informing the feasibility study and the priorities, including facility amenities and early site fit for parking and the community center itself. Derek Harvey from ETC Institute is pinch-hitting for us tonight on short notice for his colleague that was ill today. So, thank you, Derek, for joining us this evening. After Derek presents the results of the survey, I'll turn the floor over to Nancy and Erin from HGA. As you can see, Leon from Prose Consulting is also joining us online. This is the last presentation of the feasibility study work before we present the final report to the Park Commission on September 11 and then to the City Council on September 16. So, we're making great progress on the community center project. So, with that, let's jump in with Derek, and Derek is going to share his screen and give a brief presentation for us.
Can everybody see my screen? I just want to make sure everything's going good.
Yes, we can. We can hear you just fine. Thanks for being with us tonight.
Yeah, it's an honor to be here to present to you, council and mayor. Like Ann said, I'm Derek Harvey from ETC Institute. I'm a project manager here. I am stepping in for my colleague tonight, so there will be time for questions at the end of my presentation. But as I am not as familiar with the survey as he is, I might save some of those questions to follow up with him later and get a written response back to you once the presentation's over. The purpose of our survey was to help determine recreation, health, and wellness priorities for the community, to assist in meeting the city's strategic priorities, and to gather objective feedback from residents to help determine priorities for the community. Our methodology was we got a six-page survey. With these surveys at ETC Institute, we do a mail and online hybrid sample. So, we will mail out to our random sample, and in that mail, they will get a cover letter that explains the purpose of the survey as well as the survey itself, and then an envelope to return the survey in as well. And then on the cover letter, it would also tell them that they can go online and take the survey if they would like. Each survey took approximately 17 minutes to complete. Our goal for this survey was 400 completed surveys, and you received 574, which tells me you got strong community engagement. And with 574 completed surveys, we had a margin of error of 4.2% at the 95% level of confidence. And all, that is telling us that if we did this survey 100 times, 95 of those surveys we did would come back within this margin of error of 4.2% with the same results. This slide we'd like to include, if there's, if you don't remember anything else about this presentation, I want you to remember this slide. 92% of your residents have visited a park or facility in the past year. Our national level on that same question is 76% of respondents, so you're well above the national level there. 44% of your respondents have participated in our program in the past year, and that's also above our national level where it came in at 32%. When we asked them what facilities they use for indoor recreation, the Mall of America was the top option at 63%. The city of Bloomington came in at about 29%, which tells us about one out of every three of your residents is using the city as for indoor recreation. The city's newsletter and the city's website are the primary information sources that are also the, and those are also the most preferred for the city as well. And when we were talking about an indoor community center and we asked respondents what would be their most common use for it, fitness or wellness activities was the top item that they selected. When we get into how respondents use the system, usage ratings, and other providers, when we asked them to rate the quality of the facilities that they use or their members or the household use, 83% said that the facilities are excellent or good, which is very high. And this is out of that 92% that indicated that they had visited in the past year. When we asked them how much they spend per month on recreation and fitness activities, 57% of respondents spend less, spend about $100 or less per month. And then the one that really stuck out to me was the 21% that spent $200 or more. I would imagine this falls into the youth sports category in the household where youth sports take up a big chunk of money these days for some people. And this is the same one where we asked them what their top purpose would be for an indoor community center. And as you can see, fitness or wellness activities went to the top, as well as educational programs and special entertainment activities, arts and crafts, sports activities, socialization activities, and meeting and support groups were all up there as well. Now, when we designed these surveys, we set these surveys up with the questions and the way we asked the questions that we are able to determine priorities for facilities and programs when we're doing this. I'll kind of walk through this as we go through it. But for facilities amenities, the first thing we do is determine what percent of residents have a need for an item that they were presented with. When we look at this slide, outdoor spaces to enjoy nature were the top area where your residents have a need for something, followed by outdoor covered porch areas and outdoor community spaces. Public lounge here is highlighted, and we'll kind of keep an eye on that as we go through, and you'll kind of see how the process shakes out here. Once we determine the respondents that have a need for a facility, we ask them how, is that need being met by the community or by the city of Bloomington? And as you can see, we have fully met, mostly met, partly met, and not met. And the item up top that is fully met or mostly met is outdoor spaces to enjoy nature, outdoor playground and play area. And as you can see, public lounge is kind of there in the middle. 47% say their needs aren't met, 28% partly, and then 14 and 11% fully and mostly. The next thing after we ask them, hey, do you have a need for this? And then, is your need being met? We ask them immediately afterwards, out of all the items you just looked at, which of those four are the most important to you and your household? And this is where we see swimming pool, indoor lap pool comes to the top, indoor running and walking track, cardio equipment, outdoor spaces. And as you see, public lounge that we highlighted is near the bottom as some people have a need for it, but it isn't as important as some of these other items that they have on the list. And once we get all through this, we're able to run our priority investment rating, which gives us priorities for facility amenities based on our rating. As you can see, we have our top priorities. They receive scores of 100-plus. This is taking the unmet need rating plus the importance rating that we calculate adding in together, and this is what we come up with, with swimming pool, indoor lap pool near the top, followed by the indoor running, walking track, cardio equipment, swimming pool, indoor, outdoor recreation pool, followed by these others here. And as you can see, that public lounge, it was kind of hanging out in the middle the entire time there. And what we can see is it came up with that medium priority. It had low importance and a lower unmet need rating than the rest. And then the lower need ones at the bottom here are the ones that just had lower importance and the lower unmet need. And really, the way to look at this chart is the top priorities need more emphasis, more priority, need to be looked at again, maybe take a look at what you're currently doing and see if there's a way we can do it better or make sure that the residents are receiving the needs that they are asking for. The medium priority ones, continued emphasis. This is basically telling us that you're meeting the needs of your residents in these areas. They aren't getting very high importance ratings because they're probably being met already. And then the lower need ones are ones we want to continue emphasis on because they could rise up the chart, but they are the lower priority ones, and we should address the ones above those going forward. We did the same thing for programs on the survey as well. So, the first thing we did was determine what percentage of residents have a need for the program. For this one, we highlighted pickleball as that's, in the last four or five years, pickleball has taken off like crazy. But as you can see, special events were the top program that your respondents have need for, followed by environmental education and nature programs, special interest classes, and then arts and crafts and group fitness followed. When we asked if they, if we're meeting the needs of them, as you can see, pickleball has pretty large, partly met and not met, needs there. And as you can see, special events, youth sports leagues, summer camps, basketball, most of the needs are being met in those categories as well. When we look at important special events rose to the top, followed by arts and craft programs, group fitness classes, environmental education, senior programs, and then pickleball, can you see, is rising to the top as well, and so are the special interest classes and healthy eating programs. Which gets us to the priority investment for the programs. As you can see, pickleball being a high-importance item and having a higher unmet need rating compared need rating compared to the public lounge we looked at earlier becomes a high priority item, along with special events, environmental education, arts and crafts, group fitness, special interests, healthy eating programs, water fitness classes, pickleball, music classes, and adult sports leagues. As you can see, our lower need ratings, there's a few more items on this list that had a lower need. Gymnastics, tubbling, basketball, tennis, volleyball, e-gaming, and competitive swimming. There is a need for these items in the community. What we, what we'll see though, is that there's just a lower percent of residents that have a need for those activities. And then in the middle, we see our continued emphasis priority items as well. Are there any questions?
Council, do we have any questions here? Councilmember Muat.
Thank you, Mayor. My question is in regards to that one slide that you said we should all remember. 44% of respondents participated in a program in the past year. Is this any city program in any location or is this specific to one location?
This is specific to the city of Bloomington.
Okay, so the city as a whole, okay.
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, thanks Mayor. Just a quick clarification on this slide that we're looking at. 92% of respondents have visited a park or facility in the past year and Mall of America, 63% is the most used indoor provider. Do we have that number, the first number without Mall of America?
We do not, I don't think at the moment. I can take a look and see what we can pull out from the data on that, but that's one I will have to get back to you with a written response at a later date.
Councilmember, I will, we'll say in our packet, in our information here, Mall of America was at 63%. Second on that list was nearby cities and towns at 48%. And then private fitness facilities were 39%. Private fitness clubs 33%, school district 29, and the city of Bloomington 29%. So, that's how far down we are on the list. Okay. I do want to, I want to let folks know that the beeping and the distraction you're hearing up here, we got a massive thunderstorm bearing down on us here. We're not, the police or the fire chief, Yuli Seal, has been telling us it's, he thinks it's going to be okay. But I just want to give you, I just want to give you the heads up. We are in line for a pretty severe thunderstorm here in not too long. Just so you know, if you want to stick it out or if you want to head home and get someplace safe, either way works for us, but I just wanted to let you know. And you can tune in remotely from home as well. So, yep. So, Councilmember Nelson, did you have any additional questions?
No, I appreciate your clarification.
All right, Councilmember Loman.
Thank you, Mayor. So, when I look at the methodology, one of the things I wanted you, you talked about the sample size, but typically when we get other surveys, they talk a little bit about the demographics of the survey itself. And I'm just curious how representative of our community was the survey in terms of demographics, age, income, distribution across the different council districts? I'm just curious about that. You talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, so when we're administering the survey, we're looking at some of those key demographic areas. I can get you the exact numbers later tonight after I jump off the call and get into the tabular data. But one of the main things we're monitoring is race and ethnicity. We monitor that very closely to make sure we take from the 2020 census. And we're monitoring every survey that comes in. And if we don't have enough surveys from one ethnicity group, we will keep going out targeting that group until we receive enough surveys to be in the same line as the 2020 census. We try to keep within the 4.2% margin of error on those. I believe we did that on this one. For age, we do ask about household sample or household age ranges. And I believe we were within the census on that as well. But I will have to take a deeper look at the numbers and I can send you the full report with all that in it as well.
Well, that's great. But it sounds like you did your best to try to bring the data in, in line with, you know, what you would see from a census perspective and it's representative of the entire community. So, I know that that's one of the concerns that some folks have when they look at these types of surveys, you know, is it representative of the entire community in terms of, you know, in terms of that 95%? I mean, I would expect nothing less than that, but want to just be sure that we covered that.
Thank you, Councilmember.
And that's, that's our job. So, we do this all over the country and we say the exact same thing. That's what we are paid to do is make sure that it's representative of your community.
Councilmember Alessandro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think we put you on the spot there unnecessarily because I do believe the July report that we got and it's included in the packet does have that data, Councilmember Loman. So, if you look at page 76 of our packet today, the age of household members is, is, there's a chart for that. I know we don't have it over screen, but it mentions, you know, 14% of people are aged 55 to 64, 12% are 65 to 79, 14% are ages 35 to 44, et cetera. So, it's a pretty broad blush. And then if I remember correctly and doing my research before coming to council tonight, I do believe in that July report, there's also a demo, a survey that indicates that literally 20%, 20%, 20%, 20%, 20% went through all five of our zip codes.
Well, I just, thank you, thank you. I want to make sure that the public heard that.
Yeah, yeah, that's why, absolutely.
That's the only reason why I brought it forward, yeah.
That's why I want to point them to the data in that July report because you should have it. And if, yeah, and some other interesting data in that July report as well that we could talk to if we had more time. But I don't know whether or not the rest of the conversation will yield that, but I'll defer those questions. But yeah, it's a, it's a good thing to call out and I wanted to refer people to specifically where they could find it, yeah.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmembers. Additional questions or comments? Hearing none. Moving on to the next portion of our discussion here?
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Great to be here again. Thank you for having us. We do have some slides to share. I'm Nancy Blankford from HGA.
And I'm Erin Mullins from HGA as well.
Thank you, this looks great. So, beyond the statistically valid survey, HGA along with COED did some focus group because we knew there were some members of the community that maybe weren't filling out surveys or part of the statistically valid, particularly we were looking at teens and also Todd Pod, so parents with very young children. I included the slide, which is a repeat of what ETC just talked about. But again, the top priorities from the statistically valid survey were, you know, those top four really fitness and aquatic focused, just to remind us. So, when we spoke to some teens, we went with Camp Cota Junior Counselors. So, they're highly engaged teens already in the community. And we had a couple of activities with them. This first one highlights, again, you can see numbers nine and eight highlighted in red. They are, these teens in particular are also favoring some fitness with the pool and the gymnasium, but also some more hangout space, space to be around one another without screens, like a coffee shop or outdoor movie time. The other exercise we did with Camp Cota Junior Counselors was this sort of loves, dislikes, hopes, and ideas to try to draw out some other things that they really like seeing in their community or, you know, things that are hard for them to deal with or overcome, barriers you might say. And I might focus on the seeds or ideas for this slide. They were civic minded, right? Want to see a food shelf, which is already happening in the city, we know. More areas for outdoor activities, places to hang out again here and more events. So, again, in line with some of the conversations we've been talking about for amenities for this community center. With Todd Pod parents, this is a group of both moms and dads who got together during the pandemic to form a pod, but have remained strong here in the city of Bloomington. And for this group, we did a sort of visual listening kind of exercise. You could see a lot of images that were thrown out and they were asked to make a collage of what would they like to see in this new community center, especially for their young families. And we focused this on two areas. One's interior and this one is exterior. So, really a strong focus on indoor/outdoor relationships, spaces for them to play, have nature play outside, not traditional playground, thinking about community gardens, native grasses. And then on the interior, you're seeing a variety of spaces wanted. So, one where they can watch their children play without being the key play provider. Third spaces came up, so a space to kind of get off to the side, do some work, do something else while other things are happening, calm spaces, craft. So, the maker space came up, places for them to make things together. So, lots of inputs that we're gathering. I guess this is a summary of we've got the statistically valid survey, we've got some focus groups, so the teens and the Todd Pods here. And then Erin's going to talk a little bit about how that might show up in the plan after I give you the summary. So, we're not done with community engagement. We're, we've got an open house planned at Creekside on the 28th of September. And then we're going to come back with that teen focus group and then have another open house sometime in November.
All right. Thank you so much for having us. We're really excited to kind of show you where we're at in the process and, yeah, provide you with an update. I will say, as I get into these site plans and what you'll see as kind of blocking plans...
I apologize, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, may I, before we move on to the concept planning, I had one other question about surveys, if I may?
Oh, please, yes.
Okay, great, thank you. I apologize for the disruption, but I realized I probably, before I ask you to backtrack so much, I'll ask it. My understanding is that we, we also had for some folks who, I know they weren't part of the statistically valid survey, but we had some communities, community groups over at Creekside fill out some of the surveys as well. And I wonder where that data is included in the documentation that's here?
No, great point. There, there were a couple other surveys. One was the full community survey. So, more than the statistically valid, which was called to match the demographics, the full community survey we have results for. And was there a different survey for seniors?
Yeah, thank you very much for the question, Councilmember Alessandro. In your packet tonight is the compilation of the statistically valid survey and the community survey. They're side by side, so you can see the, the difference and the similarities between the two.
So, so the community survey is the one that was voluntarily done by anybody that went out to the whole group and that's like what they could do online? Am I correct?
Yes.
And then I know we did have some special, special printouts done manually for Creekside for those of folks that didn't do that stuff online. Is that right? And that's all compiled together in this community center?
Yes, it is. I believe it was 63 hand copies were, were entered from the Creekside Community Center.
Okay. If, I don't know if there's a way, as you get to the concept and how these things come together, if you can point out to us where you've merged both the statistically valid data and that community data from those two sources, the online sources and that, those 63 additional, that would be very helpful.
Councilmember Alessandro, absolutely. And if I could just mention one thing as well too, I think it's really important to note that we are only in the feasibility study phase of this project and we haven't really even started the community engagement for this project. So, I just want people to understand that we are not finished with the engagement. We're just starting the engagement. And so, this was just double checking, make sure that we have the right types of amenities in this facility. But absolutely, thank you.
Very helpful, thanks. Thank you. Sorry, again, appreciate your opportunity to do that before you got too far down the road.
Absolutely. Okay, so as Anne said, we are in the programming phase of the project, feasibility phase of the project, where we're really looking at the types of spaces that we have in the building, how they kind of lay out on the site, what the parking requirements are, and then working with Proz and ETC, looking at survey data, looking at operations of the facility, et cetera. So, there are a lot of inputs into the process right now. And we're trying to get to the end of the programming phase with understanding of the program itself, what spaces are in the building and how they might kind of lay out on the site. So, oh, what I wanted to say when I started before is what you will see on the screen looks like it's figured out and it's not. So, I just wanted to make a point of that, that as we move through this, we can have big bubbles of smushy stuff in the plans or we can get a little bit more granular and we get a little bit more accurate kind of results when we're looking at adjacencies, how programs fit together, et cetera. So, that's why these are drawn with pretty straight lines, et cetera. So, on the site plan, what we show, and we have two levels of site plan here, and I'll get to that in one second, but what this is really looking at is parking capacity on the site, where we think the building footprint may be on the site. And right now, the majority of the building footprint is situated at the northwest corner of 98th and Penn, with parking kind of being on the east side of the site along Newton. As we move up to what I would call, I guess, the second floor site plan, we start to look at kind of how some outdoor spaces start to lay out around the building. And you'll notice that four, which is the gym space that we saw on the first floor site plan, kind of goes over some of the parking. And so, one of the things we're really looking closely at on the site is how we tooth together all of the requirements on the site as far as building footprint, surface parking area, as well as storm water management, outdoor areas, et cetera. So, it's really a puzzle of kind of fitting all these pieces together. As we move into these plans, these plan diagrams, again, as I said, these are not figured out. What we're really looking at here are adjacencies within the building and verification of the program sizes that we have to make sure that when we have discussions with the teams that we understand how they're going to be programmed and that they'll work for the programs that need to take place in those spaces. And so, on the first floor diagram here, we have number seven is public health. So, public health has a portion of this building. As we saw in the statistically valid survey, indoor aquatics is kind of a heavily sought after amenity for the facility. So, number three is the auditorium and then required locker rooms just north of that. The other programs of note on the first floor here are Parks and Rec offices are number eight and indoor play area, which is number six up at the northeast corner of the first floor. As we continue moving up the building, the second floor is really devoted to three kind of major components right now. One is the gymnasium space. We know that that is a space that's in high demand. Two would be the spaces that are in the maroon red color, number five, which are programmed spaces, such as multipurpose rooms. And there's a larger multipurpose room that kind of expands into a larger events type space. Additionally, on this floor, we have some event terraces. We know outdoor space is something that is important to the community. And with all of the constraints on the site relative to parking, building footprint, et cetera, we know it's important to at least acknowledge that some outdoor space on the building might be something that we're going to need to consider. As we move up to the third floor, the third floor is almost wholly devoted to fitness programming, indoor walking trail or track that goes around the perimeter of the building, as well as the cardio spaces and fitness studios. And then we also have some outdoor fitness areas that can serve to expand some of the fitness programming spaces. So, project priorities. So, where we're at in the process right now with trying to understand programming and layer over all of these surveys and focus groups that we've done, is we've taken a look at this, these diagrams, plan diagrams that we have, and we've started to layer on some of these important survey criteria, as well as the outputs that we've gotten from like Todd Pod and Camp Cota. And so, the red and blue kind of coding on the plan is where we started. And so, relative to community engagement, we've highlighted the spaces that are high priority, medium priority, and low priority that align with the ETC statistically valid survey. And the reason that we're looking at all of these things and how they layer up is as we go through this planning process, we're also looking at the square footages required for the building and aligning things like budget and square footage, et cetera. And so, we want to understand if we're going to be making decisions with the team, what spaces are the most important spaces according to the community and the other focus groups that we've talked to. And so, on top of the red and blue and green priorities from the survey, we've then layered on, there was a public health survey that was done as well. That's up on the top left in, in pink, looking at kind of what were the important public health services that that survey came out with, as well as how does, how do teen comments layer over an auditorium spaces and layer over cafe, et cetera, to kind of add importance above and beyond the statistically valid survey? And things like Todd Pod weighing in on childcare, as well as indoor playing, that being important to their use of the building. And so, as we look at the other kind of floors of the building through these same lenses, we see that, you know, on this floor, which has some programming spaces, multipurpose spaces, social spaces... spaces, social spaces, and fitness spaces with the gym and the outdoor spaces, terrace spaces, that spaces like the public health survey came out with comments that talked about cooking classes. And so things like that in demonstration kitchen is something else that's important to consider. And then teens weighing in on things like esports and overall interest in maker spaces, et cetera. And then as we move up to the third floor, third floor is pretty much across the board high priority, according to the ETC survey, as it's all fitness spaces. But on top of that, looking through the lens of the teens and talking about fitness classes and them not wanting to maybe sign up for several month class, but being able to try a class. So that is informing our programming as well. And then the Todd Pod talking about walking, like they don't want to walk around a track, they'd rather, or walk on a treadmill, they'd rather walk around the facility.
Okay. I'm going to quickly go through the last couple of slides here. So in addition to the priorities we've heard from the surveys, from the ETC survey, statistically valid survey, we also have been working with PROs on the cost recovery piece. And so this is another layer of information about what spaces are going to bring in more revenue versus less. And so red is, this is just a sample of our program, but red would be high revenue generating, yellow medium, and then gray, little to no. And so again, we did another heat map. So this really starts to again identify what are high cost recovery, what might be medium. So aquatics is something that we definitely want to focus on, the gym, and then the fitness on the top floor. So lots of information for our team to take in to try to prioritize what needs to stay in this facility, particularly as we're rightsizing it with the budget that we have, which is a great place to be. Quickly, next steps, we are meeting with our core team on Thursday, we've got another park commission meeting on the 11th, and we'll be back here in three weeks. Thank you.
Thank you. Council questions, comments on this? Councilmember Nelson?
Yep. Thanks, Mayor. Just quickly, can you go back a few slides, you had community engagement priorities, it was under, I think the original title was project priorities.
Yeah.
Can you tell me where seniors are listed in here?
We did not meet specifically with seniors as a focus group. I know that Ann and her team have been having monthly meetings there on site to bring them up to speed and be transparent about the process and the plan, as well as those surveys.
Nancy, can you go to the second floor, where the event space is? So everything in purple here is depicted to be space that would be used for senior programming. Blue.
Blue, red.
Blueish purple. Blueish purple, yeah. The upper left, the upper left section, those are all multipurpose rooms. And then the larger one on the bottom is an event space that could be potentially divided into three different spaces. And then there is, I can't remember what that says, Nancy.
Reparation and community room.
Yeah.
So lots of flexible spaces there.
Council, additional questions? Councilmember Lohman and Councilmember Muaw. Councilmember Lohman?
Thank you, Mayor. So I know that, you know, we've been at this process of a community center for a while. And I know that during the last process, I know that there was a lot of information gathered from different constituencies. Could you talk a little bit about how that work that has been done over the, I don't know, I think it's a couple of times we've done this before, how that was, you know, put into this? And then secondarily, if you could talk a little bit about how staff looks at surveys and how it, how it is a part of this decision-making process? Because I understand it's not the only data point that we use to try to determine what we're going to do.
Yes, that is correct, Councilmember Lohman. Thank you very much for the question. The one thing that I want to add to, and Nancy was not on board yet, I believe we got you all on board around April, May, and we started our feasibility study work with PROs Consulting in February. And we started, if you all remember, with a series of focus group meetings. And we did focus group meetings with a lot of different groups, including the council, the park commission, the Creekside, all of the leader groups at Creekside, and a variety of different staff groups as well. So that kicked off our process earlier in 2024. Additionally, you know, I think it's safe to say that the community center work for the city of Bloomington started around 2014, 2015. HGA partnered with the city back then. We've done a whole variety of community surveys as part of this work. We did a lot of community engagement in a variety of different ways. If you remember back in 2019, we spent a whole year studying a potential community center at a couple of different locations. So the engagement that we've done with the community, with the Creekside seniors, with a variety of different potential users, has really been significant for the better part of 10 years.
And then, one last thing, Mayor. So then, which surprised me, but there's been some changes in the marketplace in terms of how these centers operate and work. I'm curious if you would talk a little bit about that in terms of how seniors have been integrated into other, you know, more recent community centers.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Lohman. Members of the council, yes, that is correct. It is a trend that has really been happening for the past 20 years. Over 20 years ago, it was recommended by ARP that cities no longer build standalone senior centers, that they make them into multi-generational facilities. And that is the direction that a lot of cities have been moving, not all certainly. But the opportunity to provide a multi-generational facility to meet the needs of every member of the community is certainly something that we are focusing on significantly. We're also focusing on multipurpose spaces, so spaces that would be used, as I mentioned, the purple, blue spaces up in the upper left-hand side, are spaces that would be used for senior programming, certainly during the day, and then could be turned over to teen facilities or family programs on weekends. So we intend to use this facility as much as we possibly can. We have Leon Younger from PROs Consulting on the call as well, he'd be happy to answer any questions about this as well. But we want these spaces in this facility to be used 75 to 80% of the time, all day, all evening, and all weekends. That's the way we are going to be able to make the most efficient facility.
Councilmember Muaw?
Thank you, Mayor. This question is for you, Ann. I've seen a lot of the community stuff, but have we had the communication with the neighborhood? And I ask that because I drove around the neighborhood the other day, and it is rather quiet. And with a facility like this, it will become just busier, right? So when does that conversation happen with the neighbors to make sure they're on board, online, and knowing what's going to happen in their backyard?
That's a great question, Councilmember Muaw. Thank you very much. We plan to kick off the community engagement for this project at the end of September. The date is escaping me. The 28th. It is, it is a Saturday evening, and we plan to have a community kickoff for the community center project. That's when we're going to be moving to schematic design. We're going to do an event similar to what we did for the Nine Mile Project, if you remember that, where we did a community kickoff and, and hope to get people engaged and excited about the project, and certainly inform the neighbors as to what's going to be going on in their backyards as well. We also intend to have meetings with the neighbors specifically. We plan to bring HGA and our construction manager into that conversation so that they're sure to understand what to expect throughout the entire process, from, from the time that Creekside comes down to the construction starts throughout the entire process. So I can assure you, we will be engaging significantly with the neighbors.
Additional questions, council? Doesn't look like it. Thank you. Thanks for the update and for the presentation and for the engagement that has gone on so far and the engagement that I know is going to happen and continue to happen. And looking forward to this process continuing forward. Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to item three, oh, Councilmember Alessandro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted, this is not specifically a question, more of a comment than anything. I think, just to reiterate that, what I understood this exercise for, and if I'm wrong on this, please let me know, is to make sure that we had an understanding of the combination of greatest need and highest interest in the amenities that could be in a community center that was meant for the entire community, the full generational impact, from all little kids to, you know, from, what is the, what is the Christmas song, from 2 to 92 or whatever it is, right? That's the goal, right? So, so I feel good that this gave us that data. Now, it doesn't necessarily translate into this is what the community center is going to have, nor does it translate into every single, you know, space that's going to be allocated is for one group of people versus another. It's intended to be as flexible as possible. So I guess the question that I would pose to maybe us as a group here is, what is it that we should be doing at this stage in our communications to our constituents and stuff to help people understand where we are in this process? And to the extent that we need to, to provide any additional informational feedback that we might get on this particular topic? Because I think that there's so many other topics that are going to come up here in the coming months, right? About exactly what, what senior programming looks like, for example, or what kids programming looks like, or, you know, what daycare might look like if we have that. We don't know any of that yet. And so as all of that comes in, is there anything that's in this presentation that we need to keep continuing to come back to and make sure we're keeping an eye on and we're managing as a, as a council to holding those priorities? That's, I just, it's mostly for us as a quick, and it maybe isn't appropriate at the moment just because that sounds like a study item, I realize. But, but it feels like this is a moment where we're moving from, hey, we've got, we've got a bucket of things, right? And we've got a sense for those buckets of things that are high priority, potentially high value, potentially could help us maintain, you know, operational costs, you know, break even or better, whatever you want to call that. What do we, what should we be doing as a council with this information as we move forward into the other pieces of information that's now going to come?
That's a good question, Councilmember. And I think the, the answer is that I think what we basically just heard this evening, you made the statement, I mean, there's a lot we still don't know, a lot we don't know. But I think it's incumbent upon us and part of our responsibility here is to share with what we do know, what we just heard, what we have learned from the focus groups, what we have learned from the surveys, what we have learned from our decade of doing this kind of thing, and in terms of what the priorities are, in terms of what the, the community-wide needs are and how this could best work for the city of Bloomington, all 91,000 people in the city of Bloomington. And so I would say, I mean, my recommendation would be sticking to the information that we have in front of us. I wouldn't freestyle, I wouldn't extrapolate, I wouldn't think, I would think the information that we have in front of us and ultimately to trust the process, that we're moving forward with the process. We have seen, we have two very good examples, and you were at both ribbon cuttings or groundbreaking for both Tret Baal Park and Bryant Park, where the work that went into the community engagement and the design and how, what the park could or should be, from, we talked about this, from 30% design until the finished product was an entirely different thing. Trust the process, because I think we have seen it in action, and we've seen it very successfully in action, and I expect it's going to be the case here as well. This is a conversation, and it's going to continue over the next couple of, you know, next weeks, months, as we, as we move into this. And I, I trust that our staff and that our consultants and that the people providing feedback, I think we're going to end up with a, a community center that reflects the community and that reflects what people in this community want. And it's just a matter of following the process and making our way through on that. That's my take on it. I don't know, if others have thoughts on that or suggestions?
Mr. Mayor, if I can.
Councilmember, or, excuse me, Mr. Verbrugge.
Promotion? Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. I think the, I think the key word again is just alignment, right? Is, we want to make sure that the work we're doing and engagement and understanding what the community is telling us they would like to see is in alignment with what we're doing on the feasibility assessment, and then how that translates ultimately into building program and cost recovery model, right? And so, you know, one of the places where we potentially could have gotten out of step is if we heard from the community that their highest priorities were a lot of elements that don't have high cost recovery potential, right? That could have put us into a different position in terms of how we're viewing the space allocation and how we deal, how we develop the business model. So what I would say right now is that I think we're reassured that there's, there's pretty strong alignment right now between what we understand the community is saying are their highest priorities and what we're looking at as the best way to operate a successful center from a, from a financial perspective, but also from a service perspective as part of our model. So I would say keep alignment in mind. And then, as you know, we've got some decision points that are coming here in the very near future with the acceptance of the feasibility report and some other things as we start to move towards figuring out how those space allocations get made.
Councilmember Lohman?
Thank you, Mayor. And I want to be careful I'm not, as you so eloquently said, freestyling. So, you know, there are members of the community that are certainly concerned about the programs that they currently have that are right there in the center. And I know that, Mayor, you've talked about this idea of centers of community. And so what I've, I've had to kind of get myself to kind of look at, you know, trusting the process, as you have talked about, you know, we've seen a number of changes that have happened over the years. And sometimes, you know, programs, you know, evolve and change, and they end up in different places, you know, if they're a place that can be supported. And so I just, you know, in terms of that, that concept that, you know, you kind of just raised just now, for those folks that are concerned about the programs that are currently taking place, I would ask you, Mayor, what would you say to them? You know, and I want to be specific about any particular programs, because I have the same concern that, you know, that they have. But I'm, as you said, I'm wanting to trust the, trust the process that's going to shake out all right. What would you say to those folks that are concerned about those?
I think that what I would say, Councilmember, is that things are going to change. It's going to change, because Creekside will not be there anymore. And there will be, there will be different opportunities, perhaps in different spaces, at different locations, perhaps just different opportunities in terms of the, the programming involved. But it's going to change. I mean, I think that's what I would say is that we've seen success, but we've also seen a, a facility that is well past its useful life, and we need to, we need to move forward in Bloomington regarding a, a community center, a health and wellness center for the entire community, for the entire community. And that is going to, is going to result in change in, in programming. And what our job is, is to make sure that we can accommodate the programming needs, the desires of everyone, whether it's folks from the Todd Pod to the teens to the folks that we see out here, but understanding that we don't know exactly what that is right now, and it's going to be different than what it is right now. Councilmember Alessandro, you had a comment?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I just, because Mr. Verbrugge brought it up, I wanted to just follow up very quickly. There's also some pretty interesting documentation, starting on page like, I think it's 96 of the presentation, that talks a little bit about the, the financials. And so I just wanted to get a sense for whether or not this data is, is being used to inform some of the cost recovery questions that were, we were also looking to address. Most specifically, one of the open questions is, you know, what's the preferred, question 14, what, what's the most preferred way of, of paying for some amenities? What would be the maximum amount they'd be willing to spend, you know, those kinds of things? Are we, are we, is that also tracking? Is there alignment there as we see it today? Or is there more data that needs to be gathered in that area? And if that's coming up in a future presentation, I'm happy to defer the question, but I, I wanted to, to just, since it was in the packet, I wanted to address it, since we taught, we had a slide about cost recovery here.
Mr. Verbrugge?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, Councilmember Alessandro, those specifics of the business operating model haven't fully been developed yet. So that'll be additional information coming to the council in the future.
Okay. All right. Thanks, appreciate it.
Also, any other discussion on this? Very good. We will move on in our agenda. And we will move to item three in our agenda, our consent business. Councilmember Lohman has tonight's Very good. We will move on in our agenda. And we will move to item three in our agenda, our consent business. Councilmember Lohman has tonight's consent business. Councilmember Lohman?
Thank you, Mayor. Is there anybody who wants to hold anything tonight? All right, Mayor, I will go ahead and move 3.1 through 3.111.
Motion by councilmember Lohman, second by councilmember Mua, to accept tonight's consent business as stated. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Thank you, councilmember Lohman. Move on to item four, our hearings, resolutions, and ordinances. And as I mentioned when talking about our agenda earlier, we have one public hearing this evening, item 4.1, and I will ask our city engineer, Julie Long, to lead us through this. Good evening, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. Anyone who wants to build something in an existing easement, whether it's ourselves or someone from the public, we may go through a process, either an encroachment process or a vacation process. In this particular case, we are looking at the Bloomington Ice Garden site, and they are looking for a vacation of an existing easement, because the addition is going to encroach into that easement. And we like to do the vacation, because that contacts all the utility companies, and we got to get to cross all the Ts and dot the Is. And it's fairly straightforward.
Council, any questions? I agree, this one is pretty straightforward. Councilmember Nelson?
Just one question for clarification, just so everyone's aware. Us doing this for us is not an unusual situation, and what we are doing is not unusual, and not create precedent for other businesses or things like that, that would be challenging for the city. Essentially, no one can come back, well, you did it for your own property, why don't you do it for mine? This is totally normal, straightforward, is that?
Mr. Mayor, councilmember Nelson, it is part of our standard practice. We have done it for several others multiple times in the past. We anticipate doing it in the future, especially when they're empty like this particular existing easement is.
Thank you. Any additional questions? Very good. This is a public hearing, so I will call a public hearing on item 4.1. This is regarding a partial vacation of a public drainage and utility easement over and across Lot 1, Block 1, Bloomington Ice Garden addition. Is there anyone in the council chambers who wishes to speak to item 4.1 this evening? Elizabeth, is there anyone on the phone?
Mr. Mayor, there's nobody online.
Last call for anybody in the chambers to speak to this? Council, nobody on the phone, no one coming forward in the chambers. I would look for a motion to close the public hearing on item 4.1. Motion by councilmember Mua, second by councilmember DeLaSandro, to close the public hearing on item 4.1. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Council, unless there are any questions or concerns, I would look for action on item 4.1. Councilmember Mua?
Thank you, Mayor. I would move to adopt an ordinance approving the partial vacation of public drainage and utility easement over and across Lot 1, Block 1, Bloomington Ice Garden addition, Hennepin County, Minnesota.
Second?
Motion by councilmember Mua, second by councilmember Lohman, to adopt the ordinance approving the partial vacation of public drainage and utility easement as defined in item 4.1. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Thank you very much. And that was our one and only public hearing this evening, and we will move on to item five, our organizational business. And we are going to start with item 5.1, which is an update on our cannabis business registration standards and zoning. And I think this is a dual presentation. We've got Matt Brillert, our deputy city clerk, and Emily Hessbeck, our planner, one of our planners, is going to, are going to lead us through this. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. It's good to be in front of you tonight, presenting a little change of pace from my earlier role as council secretary. As a mayor said, I'm Matt Brillert, deputy city clerk, joined by Emily from the planning division. We're back for, with another update on cannabis business regulations. We were, the city clerk was last in front of you in June, so we're, this is mostly not new information for you tonight, but we're just checking back in on a couple of items. I know that presentation ran very late in the evening, and for at least one of the items, we have some new information, and then I know on, on one of the other items we're going to be talking about, council basically brought it up, and then quickly adjourned the meeting. So, tonight we'll be just giving a brief update. We'll have some discussion as we, I think the best way to do it probably, as we go through the discussion, or as I go through the slides, we'll just pause for discussion and input on those three bullet points there, and then Emily will provide a brief zoning update. Planning staff's not looking for additional input at this time on the zoning, the zoning aspect, or the zoning ordinance, as that item has already gone to the planning commission for a public hearing. With tonight's input on the licensing standards, we'll bring forward both ordinances, the licensing and the zoning, at a public hearing in September. So, really quickly, the licensing process, how it's going to work with the Office of Cannabis Management. Cannabis businesses apply, the OCM reviews that application, they issue a conditional approval, the license, the license holder, or the preliminary license holder then finds a location, they, they confirm with the city that that location is appropriate, that it conforms with zoning, building, and fire code. The city confirms that to the Office of Cannabis Management, and then the Office of Cannabis Management issues the license, the city issues the registration. And then the city's ongoing responsibilities with regards to cannabis businesses are to conduct compliance checks. We can suspend, temporarily suspend registrations if there are any issues. And then furthermore, cities do collect registration fees from each cannabis business, or I should say, each cannabis retail business, and we would receive a share of the state's cannabis tax revenue. The first policy item we're looking for some input on is the, the new one, the one that we didn't talk about back in June. So, as you may recall, lower potency hemp edible products were legalized back in 2022, so that was prior to the full legalization of marijuana in Minnesota. These products are sold at various retail outlets, ranging from liquor stores, tobacco stores, grocery stores. They're basically allowed to be sold in nearly any retail environment Since that last council discussion in June, the Office of Cannabis Management has indicated in their, in some of their model ordinance language that they've shared, that local governments can adopt different standards for these lower potency hemp edible products compared to full cannabis retail dispensaries. So, I do, and I do want to emphasize, those are two different things. We've got the hemp products that have been on the market, and then we have cannabis dispensaries or cannabis retail that's coming. And the Office of Cannabis Management also indicated that one of the areas where cities can set different standards between those two types, between those two products, is different buffer distances. And then the last bullet point is really the most interesting one. Cities may limit hemp products to exclusive age 21-plus establishments, such as liquor stores or exclusive 21-plus tobacco stores. That's not something that we knew before the, the model ordinance language had come out, so we wanted to share that with you all, just to get your, your input or feedback on that. We've also gotten some information from a study that was done in, a study that was done by the U of M in Minneapolis, that found that retailers were failing their, their age compliance checks at a higher rate than is, than is typical for liquor stores and tobacco stores. And I think, while I haven't read the, the study, I would guess that that is because a lot of these products are sold by establishments that frankly aren't used to carting people. They're sold in grocery stores and things like that. So, with that, I'd like to kind of pause and get the, get the council's feedback on, on the city's ability to potentially limit these products to age 21-plus exclusive establishments. The implication of that would mean that some businesses in Bloomington are no longer able to sell, would no longer be eligible to sell those products. So, that's potentially a grocery store, a gas station, any tobacco licensees that are not a 21-plus exclusive establishment.
Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. A clarifying question. So, I know that there are some restaurants who, or even like the local brewery here, who have products that they might sell, either for consumption onsite, as some of the restaurants do, or to be sold and taken home. And so, would that, if we were to limit the hemp products to exclusive 21-plus establishments, would that mean that they no longer can sell those products?
Mayor and councilmember Carter, so, that would not impact the on-sale, the ability of products to be sold for onsite consumption. I don't, as far as, the statute on the lower potency hemp edibles is fairly clear that, that that would not be impacted.
Okay.
That is explicitly allowed by statute for onsite, for onsite consumption, and actually, it's limited to places with a liquor license, so like a brewery, like a restaurant.
Got it, okay.
Other businesses that do not hold a liquor license are not eligible to, to permit onsite consumption of the hemp edible products. As far as, you did raise the, the issue of restaurants that may sell those products to, to go, to be consumed off-site, that I would have to look into.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. Just for clarification on these, they can currently be sold at a grocery store, but you can't buy even 3-2 beer at a grocery store, is that right?
Mayor, councilmember Nelson, you, you can buy 3-2 beer at a grocery store. It's all the other kinds of beer that you cannot buy at a grocery store.
Okay, so then, to clarify, you can sell these at a place that you could, you could sell 3-2 beer or lower potency beer. Are there any, are there any differences between the alcohol regulation and this hemp regulation for lower potency products?
I mean, I would say the primary, Mayor and councilmember Nelson, I, I would say the primary difference is that with, with liquor, the city is the issuing authority. We have a lot more control over the process, and who gets a license with cannabis, licensing is, licensing is issued by the state. We are merely registering these businesses, so we don't have as much discretionary authority.
Interesting. Can I ask you a follow-up? In terms of discretionary authority, can we, do we do our checks, you know, in terms of are they selling it to people underage and things like that? And do we have that authority? If we don't license, can we do that or not?
Mayor and councilmember Nelson, yes, we can. So, that's one of the city's sort of primary responsibilities, is to conduct age verification checks annually. One of the other, one of the other sort of enforcement items that the statute does call out is that the city can conduct like a preliminary inspection before the retail business opens.
Councilmember Lohman?
So, then just two questions here. So, I just want to be sure I'm clear. So, is this, we're currently, are there retailers selling this stuff right now? Just so I'm clear, or?
Yeah, Mayor and councilmember Lohman, yes. So, these hemp, hemp products have been on the market for approximately two years. They were legalized by the legislature when, kind of a surprise when that happened, that they had legalized these lower potency hemp products. I believe a year went by before they were required to be registered with the city effectively. They were initially under the Minnesota Department of Health. They are now moving very soon, I believe, to, to the Office of Cannabis Management. Currently, all they do is, whether you're a producer or retailer of the lower potency hemp products, currently all you do is register for free with the Department of Health, and then you are, and then you're required to also acquire a city license. When that moves to the Office of Cannabis Management, they will actually be submitting an application, and, and there will be, I believe there will be a, a more thorough application process conducted by the Office of Cannabis Management. So, in, in a way, they're kind of starting over in that, in that transition. So, I think that's where this opportunity for the city, should the city council be interested to, to limit these products to a 21-plus establishment, now would be the time to make that policy change while this process moves from the Department of Health to the...
And I just wanted to be clear, and I thought I heard you say, yeah, that it's already out there. And so, part of my concern, Mayor, you know, with this first point here, is that it's already out there, and so, then you're kind of restricting it, and you're, you're kind of stopping something that, I mean, the cat's already out of the bag in one, one regard, in terms of that. So, like you asked us, what do we think of this? And then my secondary question is, has staff looked at it, or have any concerns in terms of if we make this restriction to bring it up to 21-plus, in terms of it may impact certain folks? I know we've done, you know, equity and inclusion review on a number of policies. Has any of that been done here with that? Would it, would this adversely impact some of our, our residents that own businesses, or business owners, pardon me?
Mayor and councilmember Lohman, we haven't done that type of analysis. I can share that currently only 17 businesses are licensed with the city of Bloomington to sell the lower potency hemp edibles. On that list, you'd find a number of liquor stores, our, our few 21-plus tobacco, exclusive tobacco retailers, and then a really interesting variety of other businesses, including like a massage salon, GNC, that those, there really are sold in a variety of retail establishments today.
Thanks for that, for that.
And if I could just jump in, so in those 17 establishments, you mentioned it's been around for a couple of years. You mentioned poor compliance on the age verification checks in Minneapolis. I'm assuming we do those here in Bloomington. Do we have any information about how the, the compliance checks are going here in Bloomington?
Mayor, we have not yet been doing age verification, age compliance verification checks on the lower potency hemp edibles. That is proposed to begin next year, when the other cannabis retail businesses join the fray. We currently do, or I should say, the police, the police department in partnership with licensing, does the age verification checks for all liquor and tobacco license holders.
Okay, interesting. Councilmember Mua, and then councilmember DeLaSandro. Councilmember Mua?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I'm interested in how the OCM, Office of Cannabis Management, is proceeding. Because when I saw them at the League of Minnesota Cities, and they presented, it was a whole lot of, we don't know, we're not ready, we're not sure. And so, I'm nervous to like, provide feedback, and then when they come back and say, oh, this is what we're going to do, and it's completely different from what we have talked about, we're decided on.
Mayor, councilmember Mua, that, that is a concern, that this idea of limiting these products to 21-plus establishments really just reared its head through the Office of Cannabis Management's model ordinance that they provided. Hennepin County Public Health also included the idea of pursuing such a policy in one of their updates. I don't know what other jurisdictions are pursuing that, because like you said, it's very relatively new information compared to the, the overall statute.
Councilmember DeLaSandro?
Of the, of the 17, thank you, Mr. Mayor, sorry, protocol. Nice to see you again, Matt. In addition, of the 17 that are licensed, how many of them would, should we, should we raise the requirement to 21-plus exclusives, how many would lose their license, or not be eligible for renewal, of the 17?
Mayor, councilmember DeLaSandro, that's a great question. I'll do a follow-up on that with, with some further analysis. I can say, a handful.
Okay.
A handful of them would. There are tobacco, there are several gas stations on that list that are tobacco retailers, they have the lower potency hemp edibles. They would potentially not be eligible to, to continue that license, once it moves to the Office of Cannabis Management.
Right, okay. I suspected, I knew, I recall specifically that the folks at Bobby and Steve's were very interested in selling this last, when they came around. So, that's what I was thinking of. Yeah, if you could let us know the approximate number that would no longer be eligible, that'd be great. I'm, you know, I, I'm of the, my, my, my policy on this has been all along, that we should get consistent on this stuff, and so, like, you know, in terms of feedback to staff, the, the, if, if, if we want to regulate lower potency stuff, like, I can go to Cub and get, you know, NA beer or 3-2 beer, but I can't go to, I can't get, you know, 5% beer there, right? If we want to do that, then maybe these low potency edibles belong in that category, and we do that all very uniformly. And then, we deal with the high potency stuff very uniformly as well, which is, you know, the liquor stores, et cetera. Now, the challenge I have there is that, you know, tobacco falls into this nebulous category, in the sense that, like, I would argue it's high potency. I would also argue that caffeine is high potency, but I won't go on that right now. But, but there, you know, there's health, there's health implications in, in all cases on those things, right? So, so the... So, so the, I guess from my perspective, if we say that we want to move everything into this category, then we put ourselves in a bit of a disadvantage because we're, we're letting, you know, the retail establishment sell the three-two beer and the lower quality, you know, the lower potency three-two stuff, but not the hemp products. And that's, that feels a little out of balance. Or it would be hard for me to justify that, I guess is what I'm saying, like why we did one and not the other. So my inclination is to, to leave this where it is, although we could certainly, it sounds like, limit the number of people that can do it. It sounds like we'll be able to do that licensing regardless. And also, we could, we could modify the distances and get some uniformity there too. But I, I'm not super, I don't think, unless we come, unless we get information that says we've been doing this for a year and we are really bad at enforcement, I, I'm not inclined to move on this to raise the number myself. If that's the feedback that we're looking for to offer today.
And I would have to agree with you, Councilmember, and you, Councilmember Lowman as well, the fact that it's in place now and I would hate to repeal it. And unless and until I see there's an issue with this, yes, it's basically three-two beer. Now, I mean, the issue could be, the three-two beer could become a thing of the past. And then what do we do? How do we, you know, characterize that in our minds? But I think for the lower potency hemp edibles, I think it makes sense to, to continue the route that we're, we're on now with the expectation that we're eventually going to do the, the compliance checks like we do with, with tobacco and with alcohol as well.
And Mayor and Council, if I can add a last word on that. So these products currently today and in the statute, when they moved to the Office of Cannabis Management, lower potency hemp products that are sold by a grocery store or other kind of non-21-plus retailer, the, those products are required, they are not allowed to be out on shelves where they can be sort of, you know, you can't, customers can't browse for them themselves. They need to be in display cases behind a counter, that type of thing.
Much like tobacco.
Yep, and that, and that will continue.
Yep, okay. Councilmember Nelson?
Just wanted to say I agree with that until that changes and we'll deal with it then if three-two goes away.
Councilmember Revas?
It's gone away, three-two, you can't find it anywhere anymore. Can we be a sanctuary city and not sell any weed at all or any products? Just a thought, I mean.
No.
Okay.
I mean, we can.
We could try, we could try.
I think we're limited, so. That's the smallest.
All right, are we good on the lower potency hemp edible? With, with the exception of, of the majority good with the lower potency hemp? All right, onward.
And then I do want to, I also, this is probably a good place to clarify that, so the, the license caps that we will talk about in a couple of minutes would not apply to lower potency hemp edible. Those apply to cannabis retailer, which we would expect to really be similar to a dispensary that you might find in another state. It's, it's the parallel of a liquor store. It's an exclusive cannabis dispensary business. That's what we'll be talking about for much of the rest of this presentation. So at the June presentation, council discussed buffers. I just want to quickly revisit a revised staff recommendation that I think plays off what, what we just heard from, from the council. So state statute allows cities to add requirements for minimum buffer distances from schools, daycares, residential treatment facilities, and attractions within a public park that are regularly used by minors, including a playground or athletic field. And that's exactly what they wrote into the state statute. Previous policy direction has been to implement the buffer requirements for schools, residential treatment facilities, and the park attractions. The planning commission, you see here on this slide, the maximum allowed under statute, and then some of the existing buffers that are in place for other items today. The council previously, at a study item last year, provided a policy direction that they were interested in seeing, or that you all were interested in seeing, the buffer for the lower potency hemp products to be reduced to 300 feet to be in line with that of liquor stores. Previous policy direction, or the, I'm sorry, the planning commission recommended 300-foot buffer distance consistent with regulation for liquor stores, while the advisory board of health recommended distances closer to the maximum under statute. The council's discussion, while brief, the, there was a consent, there was consensus around 300 feet. The advisory board of health also recommended 300 feet for the hemp licenses issued to off-sale liquor stores to get at that desire for consistency. Real quickly, I just wanted to go over, over the maps with the additional two months to, to have time to, to study this in depth. I really pored over these maps and I'm sure you all spent all weekend looking at them as well. So really quickly, when you, when you open up the base map, you see zoning districts with retail permitted. These are all the districts in the city in color there where a retail cannabis could be. Layered on top of that are the school buffers shown at 300, 500, and 1,000 feet. Zooming in and panning around this map, there are a couple, there are really just a couple areas where you, where you see overlap. So one of note is the area around Lindale, the 98th Street corridor where you have Kennedy and then Nativity of Mary School on the left, Kennedy on the right. So that shows what the, what the impacts of, of those various buffer distances would be on the, the ability of these retail properties to, to obtain a cannabis retail license. And the finding here is basically that, you know, that none, none of these distances are that great. When we're talking about 300 feet, 500 feet, 1,000 feet, I, I would say that's effectively half a block, a block, about a block and a half. With 1,000 feet, the impacts on the commercial properties around the city are greater. You can see clearly there at Lindale and 98th, there would be a pretty significant zone where retail cannabis could not go. Looking at parks, there's actually even less overlap around the city. City, I, in a city as large as Bloomington's geography and with all the different retail districts we have throughout the city, it was really surprising to see so little overlap between these three and 500-foot buffers around our park amenities and our, our retail districts. I thought, while the council already had this discussion back in June, I thought it was notable to look at the two areas where there is an overlap and just do kind of a gut check with the council. Is it worth, the question I would put before you is, is it worth writing this into our code to have the buffer around, the buffer around these park amenities when what you see in front of you there are those two sites around Fenlessen Park near American and Nicollet and at the retail area kind of adjacent to Dred Scott Park there? That is the impact of what a, what a buffer policy around parks would be. It would prevent cannabis retail in, essentially in these two locations citywide. So my, the question I would put to the council is, is it worth having that policy on the books to, to have that buffer?
Council questions, thoughts on this? I mean, I will say, I mean, Mr. Brillard said that these, whether it's 300, 500, or 1,000 feet, it's not that big of a distance. And I think the second part of that is that it's a very arbitrary distance. And I guess the, the question to ask is, does it necessarily make a difference? I mean, is it, is there an impact there one way or another? And, and what is the right, what is the right distance then? Councilmember Lowman?
So I guess what I'm hearing is no buffer at all, right? I mean, just zero. You can just, no buffer for anything? Is that, is that what we're saying?
Mayor, Councilmember, Councilmember Lowman, no. I'm, now certainly cities are not required to implement buffers, but that, no, that's not what staff is recommending here. It's basically just as we arrive at a, at final ordinance language, just doing a check-in with the council to see, is it worthwhile to have a buffer around these park amenities when the real-world impacts of that policy are extremely limited in these two locations?
I obviously heard that wrong, because what I heard was just no buffer at all, anything at all. So, I mean, I know I am in the minority. I mean, I think 1,000 would be great on everything. But, you know, given what you just said, I, I am, I am tempted. I'm wondering, you know, if, if staff really believes that there is no impact at all, then the same case could be made really for, really all of the different areas that we're talking about. So.
And Councilmember, I want to be clear, I don't think the staff said there would be no difference at all. I don't think that was a staff message. And I was throwing it out there as almost a provocation statement to figure out where we want to be on this and what really makes sense. I mean, does 300 feet make sense? Does 1,000 feet make sense? Councilmember Nelson?
Just a quick question on this chart that we're looking at here. This B2 district, just to the north of that is a school, a private school that also has a playground that they allow the community to use. And so how does that, the school and that playground, impact what can happen in this B2 district there?
Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, thank you for bringing that up. I neglected to mention there, you can see the gray at the top of the map there on the right, there is the Lutheran school there. I, I turned off the school buffers in this map you see here, so you're not seeing the bubble around the school as well. But actually that, with a buffer around the, the school, that north, that retail property north of Old Chocopee Road would be covered by the school buffer. Should, should the city council choose to implement a buffer around schools, that northern retail property is effectively ruled out for cannabis retail. It would be the, the property to the southeast corner of Bloomington Ferry and Old Chocopee that would be basically caught up by the, the park buffer only.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. So we're pretty much down to one location. If you had that in there, is that accurate? And second question, that is for retail sales of cannabis. So the new pizza place, the existing Zeke's Burger place there, if they wanted to sell THC drink on premise, that's totally separate. Is that accurate?
Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, that is correct. We're not proposing a buffer distance for, for those liquor license holders that have on-premise consumption, because that, that would basically cause problems all over the place. And it may be an opportune time to go to the, the next slide where I had identified the, the staff recommendation. Where we left off a couple of months ago, the council had kind of circled around 300 feet. With this new information and also the, the benefit of two months passing, we've been able to see what some of our peer cities are doing as well. Our neighbors to the north, both Richfield and Minneapolis, are planning to do, are planning to implement a buffer of 300, or I'm sorry, misspoke, 500 feet around schools. So this revised staff recommendation here is based on the council's previous conversation as well as what some of our peer cities are doing. So we would recommend 500 feet around schools, residential treatment facilities for sure, the park amenities, should the council choose to include that. And then for the hemp edible retail, would go at 300 feet and look to write in some kind of clause into the ordinance that our existing liquor stores, our existing 21-plus exclusive tobacco store locations would be able to obtain a license, because those just seem like appropriate locations for these, for the hemp edible products to be sold.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Quick clarification, there is a liquor store in that B2 zoning district. Would they be able to transfer that license if they sold the business? If this has existing liquor stores and they sold that business, would that license be able to transfer with them?
So Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, licenses, whether liquor, tobacco, cannot be transferred. It's always a new application. I think what we would look to do in the language that we write for liquor stores to preserve their ability to sell the hemp products, should there be a change in ownership. Because like I said, it, it just makes sense for, for the hemp, for the lower potency hemp products to be able to be sold in liquor stores. That's a, that's a 21-plus environment that we hope does a pretty good job of carding people.
Additional thoughts on this? Councilmember Carter and then Councilmember DeLisandro, Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. So I guess I would just, I would say that the advisory board of health letter was very persuasive to me, and I actually would love for us to go with their recommendation. And looking at the retail zoning districts with school buffers, if we were to go up to 1,000 feet, it doesn't, it's another one where it doesn't seem like it has an additional significant impact on businesses, but could make a pretty big difference in terms of like the ability of kids to be able to see those businesses. And again, I know we have sign ordinances and things like that that'll probably be regulating what they can put on the outside of their building, but yeah. So I guess the, the public health person in me is going to align with the advisory board of health and, and go with their recommendation.
Councilmember DeLisandro?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Brillard, can you move back to the, the one where you had them side by side? The, the ones that we all came up with back in June, I think it was? Okay, thanks. So, so, right, okay. So this is the, so they, they are, they are recommending, to Councilmember Carter's point, they're recommending 1,000 feet for cannabis, for schools, 500 feet residential treatment facilities, 300 feet for park attractions, and, and 300 feet for the hemp licenses that we already have. The difference between what you had on the recommendation page and this page is only in the difference between the 1,000 feet and the 500 feet. Do I have that right?
Councilmember DeLisandro, that is correct.
Okay, and everything on the, for the lower potency products we're already in alignment with or we would be if we passed this, correct?
That's correct. The council had previously given direction that they were interested in seeing the lower potency hemp edible go from 500 down to 300.
Right, and it looks like the advisory board of health is okay with that. Okay, very good. Yeah, I, my, my opinion, I guess, Mr. Mayor, is that for me, the difference, you know, between 500 and 1,000 feet is, to, to Councilmember Carter's point, is not so much whether or not we'll eliminate the ability for people to sell it as much as it's the ability for folks to see it as they go by and, and all that kind of stuff. So, you know, I'm thinking about, for example, in the, in the recommend, or the example that was given at 98th Street, you know, the, the one tobacco retailer that we have there is already not going to be able to do anything with this regardless of how many feet we give it, because the only way we would be able to give them the ability in their location to sell cannabis or for that matter, low hemp products is if they, if, if we said no buffer at all because of where they're located. So, you know, unfortunately, that tobacco retailer is not going to be very happy regardless of what we decide today. But, you know, it, it, it is a, so the, you know, is Festival going to sell? You know, which is what's right there, right? Festival is, we would be limiting Festival from being able to sell, like in that particular location, just looking at that and saying Festival would or wouldn't depending on whether we said 500 or 1,000, like in that particular location. But I don't, I don't know if they would do that anyway, because they don't have a license to sell 21-and-over products anyhow. So would they come and ask for one? So, you know, this is the kind of thing that I, I just don't know enough to say like that's a limiting factor.
Councilmember Carter with a good question?
So I think we're talking about like the cannabis business, not the low.
Yep, same.
But I, would Festival be able to be like a can, like a cannabis?
No, I mean, that's what I just said. If they don't have a, a license to sell 21-plus products today, could they get a license to sell this cannabis product? And if they did, would they want to? I don't know the answer to that question. I'm just suggesting that we would be preemptively forcing them not to, yeah.
Well, and I guess for me, I would, I would say in alignment with the advisory board of health.
Right.
I would make this decision knowing, assuming that even if they wanted to, then they couldn't.
Right, that's true.
You know what I mean?
That's true, yeah. And so I don't know what the impact, my point is that between 500 and 1,000 feet, I'm looking at a specific business and I'm going, I don't know that there's an impact to them one way or the other. So it's hard for me to say I care about 500 feet versus about 100, 1,000 feet. I would just like us to be consistent here. And the 500 feet felt more comfortable for me because it was more in alignment with what we do for liquor stores already. And so I was kind of looking for consistent high potency to high potency versus low potency to low potency. So 300 for low potency, 500 to high potency feels better to me, but I, I'm not going to say no to 1,000 because I just can't tell the difference in my, like in what the true impact is here. Thanks.
Councilmember Lowman, let's see if we can get to. Councilmember Lomond, let's see if we can get to consensus on this and move this along.
So Mayor, we could always increase or lower this at any point in time, right? I mean, this is not a set in stone thing, so. Um, so I don't know. I mean, it sounded like we were at 500. Um, you know, certainly I, I wanna see 1,000, but, uh, you know, I mean, I can, you know, we can move on. I don't wanna spend all night talking about 500 or 1,000 feet. Come on. So, I mean, i- i- I mean, unless there's, you know, enough to get us to 1,000, um, you know, I mean, I know, I, I'm at 1,000.
So, and once again, I'm looking, I'm trying, going really quick here. Uh, Councilmember Revas.
I mean, I, I just wanna ask a question. Do any of you hunt? You know, the difference between 1,000 feet and 500 feet, right? It is a big distance. It might not make any sense for us to talk from one block to the next. But if you actually look at 500 feet, it would be about 150 yards or 160-plus yards, right? You take a shot at that distance, piece of cake. You add a couple hundred yards to that, and it becomes a little more challenging. The same thing is you, you're looking at a sign or at a store, a kid coming out of the store. I was a kid and I used to smoke pot, I'll admit that, okay? And I don't like it. It wasn't a good thing for me, and I don't think it's a good thing for any youth out there. So i- if this is gonna stay, which we don't, we can't control that it came from the state, 1,000 feet will be the minimum that I would consider myself. I mean, just from the health point of view, uh, it was my argument before when we had this conversation back in the spring, that as it is, we have a lot of challenges with kids' addictions in high school. So we can't do anything about getting rid of it. So if we're gonna have it, let's try to do the best that we can to keep it as far as possible from the children. That's all I need to say. Thank you.
So the two possibilities, based on the staff recommendation, is, uh, 500 feet with schools and then the 300 feet for the residential and the park attractions. And the Advisory Board of Health is 1,000 feet, 500 feet, and 300 feet. Just a nodding show of, of, you know, show of hands here, one way or the other, which, what direction would we like to go on this? Because, yeah, we could, we could kind of go back and forth, I think, all night in terms of this. So I know at least 1, 1,000.
Do you want us to raise our hands?
Yeah, yeah, 1,000. Okay, and the 500? And something else, Councilmember? Okay, so, um, we don't have consensus, but we, uh, Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I understand, uh, you know, the desire of some to just have consistency, especially from the perspective of businesses in our community, right? Just to make it a little bit easier for them, but, I mean, didn't, isn't liquor 300 feet? Existing buffers on licensed type liquor stores is, like, we're not going to, we're not considering 300 feet. We're considering 500 or 1,000. So we're not getting too, you know, so to me, I think we should make this decision based on the information that we have. I don't think it needs to be dependent on the 300-foot liquor store. That's my personal opinion. And so, uh, because again, we're not going to get, we're not going, that's not what we're considering here. And so I kind of feel like it's either 500 feet or it's 1,000.
And I, I think that is kind of the, the direction we're going here, and we're kind of split three, three and one on this, but, uh, so Councilmember?
I'm supposed to do 750.
Well, staff, there's your feedback, and, uh, why don't we, uh?
Well noted.
Yep, well noted, and as, as we bring this forward, we'll see where it all kind of.
If you'd like, I mean, I'm, again, I'm neutral on this whole thing. I really am. I don't think that it's, if, if we wanna give them a specific direction, it sounds to me like Councilmember Nelson wouldn't, doesn't have an opinion on one way or the other, considering it's not consistent. You don't care either way?
Yeah, either way, if it's not consistent, we change liquor.
I don't think so. I mean, I guess we could, going forward, but we wouldn't grandfather, we'd have to grandfather all the people in.
We'd be putting some folks out of business if we didn't grandfather folks in.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, they would be grandfathered though, right? And the only reason I say that is I just want it to be simple for staff. Somebody calls and they're like, it's 1,000.
Staff was the one who came forward with 500. They, they came back with the mix.
They said 500?
Their, the staff recommendation was 500.
Mr. Mayor, you are at 500?
Yes. I, the, the, as Councilmember Carter points out, planning staff, that was the planning staff recommendation and, or the planning commission and the, and the staff recommendation, not the recommendation of the Advisory Board of Health.
Right. So Nelson, Alessandro, Mua, and Busier at 500. Am I correct?
If Nelson can say 500 or, okay, let's say, let's say 500 and bring that forward, and if we vote it down, we'll, we'll, we'll bring it back. Yep, yep.
All right, our third item, uh, tonight. Uh, so the, the council also very briefly discussed, uh, the, the opportunity, um, to place, uh, a cap on the number of retail licenses. Uh, statute allows local governments to set a cap to no fewer than one regi- one retail registration for every 12,500 residents for Bloomington. At our current population, that would result, uh, in seven, uh, retail dispensary licenses. I want to again clarify, that does not impact the lower potency hemp edible. This would just be the full-on, uh, cannabis dispensary. The city council may choose to set a cap higher than the num- than the statutory minimum, or choose not to set a cap. Uh, the number of licenses could also be expanded at a later date through a subsequent, subsequent, uh, city code amendment. So the, the council discussed this for about, um, a minute or two, I think, back in June, before, uh, everybody said, well, would you look at the time? Um, so I just wanted to bring it back for just a little more, uh, discussion on that point. Uh, the, the planning commission and Advisory Board of Health, uh, did not recommend a cap on the number of retail registrations in the city.
It's Councilmember Alessandro, then Councilmember Carter.
Uh, I have a quick question for you, um, Mr. Brillhart. Do you have, do you have a sense for the inquiries you've received to date on this? Um, has anyone come forward and requested, uh, status of license, uh, issuance, or anything like that? To give us a sense for the demand for the registrations?
Uh, Mayor and Councilmember Alessandro, it, it's actually been oddly quiet recently. You know, in the, the year or so that I've been in the city clerk's office, we've occasionally gotten a call or someone coming in inquiring about it. But that was, it's been several months, uh, before the Office of Cannabis Management had really begun their, uh, their current process, where they're looking at the, I'm sure you've, as you followed in the news, um, they're reviewing the equity qualified applicants right now that will go into a, a lottery process, um, this month and next month, uh, before they begin issuing those preliminary licenses. So, yeah, it's been, it's been oddly quiet for as much as it's been in the news. I haven't, I personally have not received a ton of inquiries recently.
Do you know how many license requests the state has received to date?
Oh, gosh, that, that number was just in a news story recently. I didn't write it down with me. Uh, one, one additional piece of context, uh, for the council to consider in, in consideration of a, of a cap on the number of licenses, is that, uh, in the, in the 2024 legislative session, the state made some changes to the law, where they are going to, uh, for the first, I'd say about year and a half of, uh, cannabis being in the market, the state is going to limit the number of licenses that will be issued. Um, so for the, uh, the applicants that are going into the sort of equity lottery, I'll call it, uh, this fall, uh, there's only going to be about, uh, I would say under 200 licenses. And then furthermore, once they open the applicant pool to all applicants, um, through July 1, 2026, there are between the equity applicants and the, and the, I guess, regular applicants in that first year and a half or so, uh, there's going to be fewer than 200, or I'm sorry, I misspoke, fewer than 250 retail licenses issued statewide. So there, there is effectively a cap applied statewide. We don't know how those will be geographically distributed and how, you know,
Thank you, Ms. Ray.
how that filters down to Bloomington.
Councilmember Carter, then Councilmember Revas, and Councilmember Nelson.
Um, so I would be fine, um, not having a cap, especially considering what you just said about the state kind of essentially has one. Uh, but also, I guess, my perspective is, um, if we have, you know, the reasonable buffer zones, that's already kind of limiting business, like, business opportunities where they can be. As long as we have those in place, then I don't feel like it'd be necessary, necessarily to have a cap. Which would be an even stronger case for 1,000 foot, but I'm just.
Councilmember Revas.
I just have a question. Uh, based on the information I read from the National League of Cities, uh, on regards to the legislative, I have a hard time saying that, but the session that just passed by the, uh, Senate in, uh, Minnesota State Senate, right? Uh, they haven't decided a lot of the regulations that they, they wanna put out there. They, it has to wait until the next session, right? Just next year. Are there any other regulations that we might establish in the city? Are they gonna, is, is, is there a possibility that that might have, that might change because of what the state decides next year?
Uh, Mayor, Councilmember Revas, I think, I think with, with all things cannabis, with this being so new, I, I think there's always a possibility that the legislature is going to continue to, uh, they're gonna, certainly going to continue to evaluate and reevaluate as the market opens, what further changes need to be made. Um, where things are currently, um, is really with the, the Office of Cannabis Management's rulemaking process. Uh, the, the Office of Cannabis Management is tasked with basically interpreting the, the law that was passed and passing administrative rules, um, that, uh, that will apply to all cities in the state. Um, some inter- some items of note, uh, in that legislative rulemaking that's come out recently are, items like security, product storage, uh, lighting, uh, items like that, that will apply to, to all cities statewide. Thank you. Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I have two questions that are somewhat related to this. I apologize if they're not in the right area. The first one is, um, probably somewhere nobody wants to go, but are municipalities allowed to own their own retail establishments similar to liquor in other places and generate revenue to offset other costs?
Mr. Verbrugge?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, and maybe I'll defer to Matt if I misspeak here, but, uh, the answer is yes, the city may. Uh, the difference is that the city is not granted an exclusive operating right the way that it is for municipal liquor. So there is no, um, preferences, I understand it, in the, in the license granting process. There was a reference earlier to the comment about whether the city should be in the business or not, and, um, we had just a passing conversation about this, uh, at the end of last year, I believe, when we were forecasting that we'd have this process coming. And my recommendation at that point was that we not pursue it, uh, not for any reason related to the business or the, the, um, uh, license pursuit process, uh, simply because it's a new startup enterprise operation. I think cities that already have municipal liquor are in much better position to be successful, uh, with a new, um, business enterprise. And I think it would be more challenging for us to start up a whole new enterprise that we haven't operated before. Now, if that's something that council wants to, um, consider differently, uh, staff would, would accept that direction and start doing some homework.
Also, just for me, that at this point, I would say no. However, I would continue to monitor that based on what we're seeing. And if our municipalities do it and it is a source of revenue and it is a place that we can ensure, you know, we maintain our buffers, that we maintain good checks on age and things of that nature, and can run it well and make sure we do it, and it's a way to generate additional revenue that would otherwise be coming in. But the reality is, and I take your point, that, you know, we'd have to compete in the private marketplace and maybe the government isn't always the best at that, so.
And Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Nelson, I'm glad you said that, because I, I think it is important to note some legislative intent here, which is that, uh, they, um, they were intentionally, uh, they were intentional about, uh, making sure that disadvantaged business enterprise, uh, and, um, minority and women-owned entrepreneurs had an opportunity, uh, in this marketplace, uh, and have, uh, I think, set some ground rules to ensure that. And, and so this notion of whether a municipality should get most favored nation status or something like that, uh, works against that intent of the legislature. So, um, you know, they, they wanna see, um, small business enterprise, uh, do well in this startup, um, business environment. And I just want to make sure that council understood that as well.
So, and then dovetailing that, talking about revenue, um, the other part of the law is that municipalities will get revenue, um, from this. Can anybody explain how that works? Does that have any impact on any of the decisions we're making in terms of number or anything like that of, of how that revenue share of the tax comes back to the municipality?
Mr. Brillhart?
Uh, Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, I have just a little bit of information on that. Um, I do know that a, a share of this, of the state's, uh, sales tax revenue on cannabis is going to be, uh, split between, I, I can't recall if it's a 10% or 20% share of what the state takes in, but that share will be split between cities and counties, uh, to fund basically local enforcement efforts. So yes, uh, to your point, a fewer, a, a smaller number of stores could potentially mean less revenue coming into the city.
Mayor, if I might add one other, and I don't really, if know if this is the right area, but there was a question from Planning Commission with regards to events and mobile cannabis sales. Like, you know, if you can go to an event and have a beer truck, can you go there and have a THC truck? And, and how that works, how that works with buffers? I know that that was maybe, the information was not available to them at that time, and it may not be available now. But just, sorry, I'm just trying to find a place to ask that question.
Mr. Brillhart?
Uh, Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, staff continues to study, um, the issue of cannabis events and what we, what we can and can't limit under, uh, state statute. You know, it's, the, the concept of a cannabis event is interesting, because of, when you take into consideration all of the places where you can't use cannabis indoors, on public property, in, or, I'm sorry, not use cannabis, smoke, I should say, smoke or vaporize cannabis indoors, in parks, uh, on other various public properties, it really limits, I guess, the imagination of what a cannabis event could be. Uh, I know that, that, maybe you have a, uh, maybe you have a bigger imagination than I do, but I, I, I know that some, um, some cannabis events will be more like a, like a trade show, uh, between, you know, it's a, a business-to-business trade show. Others may be more consumer-oriented, where there is sampling.
And, and actually, Councilmember, I asked that similar question, uh, of members of the Office of Cannabis Management three months ago or so, and they had no answer. They had no idea. So, yes, exactly. Uh, so thoughts on this, uh, the retail limitations, the, the recommendation by, by planning and the, um, and, uh, our health folks are, are saying no cap. I don't know if folks are comfortable with that. I, I think I would be comfortable with it and see what the market has to bear, and especially with the, with both the zoning and the, the distance regulations we have in place, it's... We good with that? All right, very good.
Okay, moving on. I'll try to be quick about this, this next one. I, I believe this is my la- last slide, and then we'll have a very brief update, uh, from Emily in the Planning Division. So retail hours of operation were not something that, uh, we have brought up before. The state law actually allows cannabis retail to take place between, uh, the hours of 8:00 AM and 2:00 AM. Cities can further, uh, restrict retail hours. Staff's recommendation, um, is to, uh, basically set retail hours very similar to liquor stores. Uh, so 8:00 AM to 10:00, 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM, Monday through Saturday. That's identical to liquor stores in Bloomington and what's under, uh, what's allowed in state statute. The Sunday hours are a little longer than what's allowed for liquor, um, but that's just due to what you can do under the state law. Cities can only restrict it to as, as little as 10:00 AM to 9:00 PM. You can't restrict further than that. Whereas for liquor stores, they're bound under state statute. They can only be open, I think, 11:00 to 6:00 on Sundays.
Council thoughts on this?
I have just a quick clarification, if I may, Ms. Ray.
Quick clarification, Councilmember?
So, so you said, Mr. Brillhart, you said, if we wanted to make Sunday 11:00 to 6:00 to be consistent with liquor, could we do that? Or you're saying that this is the minimum amount that the... Or you're saying that this is the minimum amount that the state will let us limit Sunday?
Mayor and Councilmember DeLaSandro, this is, the 10:00 AM to 9:00 PM is the most that cities can restrict hours under the state statute. You cannot restrict it to open later than 10 or close earlier than 9.
Interesting.
So we, the city cannot, but for Sunday, or on Sundays, the city can't quite match liquor store hours, just because those liquor store hours are so restricted under state statute.
So said another way, cities can limit retail hours, but only to a certain extent, because they've given us the minimums?
Correct. Yeah, the maximum is 8:00 AM to 8:00 AM to 2:00 AM. The minimum is, the minimum seven days a week is effectively 10:00 AM to 9:00 PM.
Okay, thanks. Thank you.
Councilmember Mo.
Thank you, Mayor. I was just looking up real quick here, cub liquor hours, just because I know they have that Sunday. So like if we did Sunday and we allotted them to be open 10 to 9, but the store closes before that, like, that's the store's prerogative. It's not us enforcing that, right? So we're not caused, we're not under any issue with legislation.
Mayor and Councilmember Mo, that's correct. Yeah, the, some liquor, some liquor stores in Bloomington today choose to open at 9, 10:00 AM or later. Many are open at at 8:00 AM. Certainly not bound to.
Councilmember Lohman.
So how would that work if if you, let's say you did have a cub liquor, and you wanted to continue selling the cannabis, you just wouldn't be able to sell the liquor?
Mayor, Councilmember Lohman, I should clarify, actually, in statute, these retail hours are only for the cannabis retail dispensaries. These hours are in a different part of the statute than the lower potency hemp edibles, so I don't think we have that, I don't think the city has that same authority to limit hours on the lower potency hemp.
If I could ask one more follow-up.
Councilmember Lohman.
So then with with the 2:00 AM in mind, so that's, is that off sale and on sale, or is that just?
So for the, yeah, for Mayor, Councilmember Lohman, for on sale, again, the only the only products that are allowed for onsite consumption, like a beverage, are at, are the hemp-based products, and only holders of a liquor license are eligible to serve the hemp, the hemp drinks that are on the market today.
And that doesn't apply to this right here, right?
That's correct.
Okay, I'm just, I don't, I'm not aficionado at all with this. I just clearly can see that. So then what are what are other cities doing? Are they, I mean, I just can't imagine a 2:00 AM timeframe to be open that late. Help me understand how that would make sense.
Mayor, Councilmember Lohman, you know, I don't have a lot for you there. I asked why they had set the hours so broadly, but I think that was done with you know, there, there are certain type, there are cannabis retail types of businesses that do allow some onsite consumption in a limited capacity. Perhaps cities would be interested in in allowing those to be open later, but I I just made an assumption here that the the council would be more comfortable with hours similar to to liquor store hours.
Yeah, just, Mayor, just, you know, I am more in that that camp. I'm just trying to understand the the business model behind that up to 2:00 AM, if, you know, if that made sense to kind of do that. But I I would want to be more cautious as we get started, and and I assume we haven't had any proposals for a 2:00 AM at all at this point, and just wait and see if the market is asking for something like that before we kind of make a decision around that.
I would, I like the staff recommendation, because I agree with you, councilmember. We don't need to go to bar time with this. That makes no sense. There's bar time is busy enough. We don't need to add one more thing. So I would, I would recommend we stick with the staff recommendations on this. Any other thoughts on that? Staff recommendation news?
Okay, good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I'm here.
Waiting for us.
Yeah, I'm here to give you just a quick update of what happened at the Planning Commission public hearing. So we went to a study session with Planning Commission. We went to a study session with you all, and we felt that we could move ahead with the zoning ordinance piece of this. So we held a public hearing on August 15th at Planning Commission, and they recommended adoption of the ordinance four to one. There were no comments really on the zoning districts or approval types. We did have a last-minute change to the wording of one of the definitions and the use tables as was, we were working with an existing medical marijuana business in Bloomington, so we kind of changed some of that. And there were no people who came to testify. It was, for the most part, pretty straightforward. And then my next slide goes over the things that were changed. And again, you will all have a chance to comment on this at the public hearing. We'll come back to you for actual adoption of this. But basically, just a quick summary of zoning code changes. We added a few different use types specifically related to cannabis. We added those definitions into the definition section. We put those new uses into zoning districts and made them conditional uses pretty much so that they have an additional level of review. We don't have use standards at this moment. We have a section left open blank for that to the point in the conversation earlier. The state doesn't really know what they're doing yet, so we're kind of waiting for that for things like lighting and security. And then lastly, one of the big changes is just deletions of the old standards for medical marijuana. So, yeah, so that's kind of just a summary of those changes, and that's all I have.
So based on the direction we received tonight, staff will finish drafting the licensing and registration ordinance, and we will be back in front of you in September, where both ordinances will have a public hearing and then consideration by the council. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on our agenda, council, is item 5.2. It's our study item on short-term rentals, and I do want to point out to the council, we've still got three more kind of beefy items on the agenda here. We are already at 8:45, and so I'll point it out to the council, and I'll point it out to staff as well, that got to get home and see what kind of storm damage we've got, so.
Hopefully zero.
Good evening and welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. I am before you today to talk about short-term rentals. This is study item session. This is kind of a roadmap of what I'll be taking you through today. Pretty standard project background analysis, policy options, and potential next steps depending on your direction. So prohibition for rentals less than 30 consecutive days was established in 2016. Short-term rentals were revisited as part of a sharing economy study item session, but that happened in January of 2020, and COVID-19 shifted priorities and paused further action for the sharing economy. And so in 2023 and 2024, short-term rentals specifically was added to the Planning Commission work plans, and that's how we are here today. As I said, short-term rentals for transient lodgings or residential stays less than 30 consecutive days. And they're kind of a complex use because they operate both in the residential housing market as well as the hospitality industry. For the study, I considered BTT, a welcoming and connected community, the comprehensive plan, element three, housing, and the recent resolution 202474 about aligning housing with the Bloomington Tomorrow Together, pardon me, strategic plan. So the question that I have for you tonight is, should the city continue the prohibition on short-term rentals or allow the use in some form? This map shows the various cities in the Twin Cities metro and their short-term rental policies. Green allows short-term rentals either by explicit ordinance, where they say, yes, it is okay, or they are silent on it, where they don't explicitly prohibit it. So it may, they may operate and they don't regulate, or they just allow it with their short-term or their rental licensing program, but there's no specific use standards. Yellow or red is cities that explicitly prohibit short-term rentals at this time, and yellow is kind of a partial prohibition. When I called Intergrove Heights, they said, no, we don't allow it unless they are a room in a house where someone, the owner lives there. So it has to be owner-occupied house, and it cannot be the, and it can only be a room. Short-term rental considerations fit into the five themes that you see here on the screen. The specifics of these short-term, of these considerations are that short-term rentals can have an impact on housing cost and affordability. Excuse me, housing cost and availability. They also impact the availability of long-term housing opportunities. They can impact neighborhoods via nuisances as well as demographic and population changes. They, and due to decentralization, they take time and resources to regulate and can be challenging to regulate and collect taxes. They can generate income for homeowners to offset costs of living, and they could be a new revenue source for the lodging tax for areas where we were effective. The Bloomin, this is the Bloomington-specific context for those main, five main considerations. Planning Commission specifically highlighted the potential negative impacts to housing affordability and availability due to the low vacancy of both homeowner-occupied opportunities and renter occupied, or renter occupied opportunities. The city's hotels and the competition that could impact them from short-term rentals being allowed, the impacts on neighborhoods, especially when thinking about social isolation, as well as the neighborhood character, and the additional staff time and resources to develop and administer the program. So those were their primary concerns from from the Planning Commission. This slide here is just to show that the, there are regulatory tools available. So although it's not specific to the topic of this discussion, I just wanted to show you that there are options, there are places out there that do regulate, and those, these are the tools that are available to us if we did allow it. So the efficacy of these tools would depend on the demand of short-term rentals and some of the other requirements. If if you direct to allow it, those regulatory tools would work together in order to understand the efficacy of mitigating the impact of short-term rentals. So there are four policy options that are presented to the Planning Commission. There is prohibition, owner present, owner usually present, or owner never present of a dwelling unit or dwelling units, so things like duplexes or other kind of structures with multiple units. To give their assessment on the study question, Planning Commission used a dot or sticker poll to vote between these options. Each commissioner could vote for one or for any number of options once. So the strongest preference was for a continued prohibition, which is option one. All five of the present planning commissioners voted for prohibition, followed by a second preference of allowing owner-occupied or owner-present accommodations, option two. This is in line with staff's recommendation. This table shows the four policy options in more detail and to show the tops, accommodation types and the impacts. So this shows also the likelihood of impact on housing availability and affordability, neighborhoods, hotels, and hosts. The options are arranged from the least likelihood of impact to the most likelihood of impact, which is least permissive also to more permissive. So next steps after discussion. So if we're directed to continue the prohibition, the project will be complete and no further actions would be required. This does not eliminate the option for council or Planning Commission to revisit this topic. It just says for right now, we would continue the prohibition. If directed to allow, that means they would go to code amendments and public hearings. So planning's responsibility would be updating chapters 19 and 21, the use tables, and possibly some standards. We would recommend a delayed effective date of the ordinance to allow for other city departments like environmental health to develop processes and programs on how to handle this new use in residential areas of the city. I'm going to go back to this table here to give you a representation of what the options are, and that concludes my presentation.
Thank you much. Council questions, thoughts on this? Councilmember DeLaSandro.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. A question for you. Thanks for being here tonight. In in the case where we talk about guest room suite portion of dwelling ADU, are we making any explicit requirements for the space itself in terms of its size relative to the house, et cetera? The reason I ask that question is I know that we do have some of that as it relates to ADU at some proportion of the total number of, you know, square feet or whatever it is. And that can be limiting inherently if you're talking about, for example, a finished basement ADU, right? Where the the footprint of the house is exactly the same, and so therefore it doesn't qualify under ADU standards. Is there anything proposed in terms of limiting here?
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember DeLaSandro, that would be if you wanted to allow the short-term rental as a use, those things could be specified. So you're kind of have a lot of options of limiting it or not limiting it.
Okay.
So portion of dwelling might be that basement because it's not technically an ADU, but it's available for offering of accommodation. Guest room and suite is pretty straightforward. And then ADUs would be, you know, if there, it would likely be the entire space of the ADU regardless of whether it was internal or or detached. And we, putting limitations on how much of an ADU you could offer on air, on short-term rental likely would be really challenging to enforce and also challenging to do.
Right. That's helpful. Thank you. Okay, so I understand where you're coming from. We will have that, we'll have that opportunity potentially as we look at the the recommended language there. Yeah, so in the sake, for the sake of brevity, Mr. Mayor, I think number two is great for me, and and specifically because it does solve that that challenge. I think we've we've heard from a number of people over the course of the last couple of years where they have a basement, you know, in-law type suite. It's the same footprint of their house, and so therefore it can't qualify as an ADU, but we don't have short-term rental for them, so they're stuck in this weird place where they have this space, and they can't do something with it unless they offer it for a long-term rental situation, which is not necessarily what, you know, an ADU is meant for in in lots of circumstances. So I I particularly appreciate this compromised position of an option two. Thanks.
Councilmember Lohman.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank Councilmember Patrick Martin, who was willing to to delay this project a number of, I guess, a year, past his, I think, so I'll, I will, in the spirit of him, keep a very open mind. I'm firmly in the in the number one category here. But what I wanted to ask was around this, this number two portion. And what I'm trying to understand is how how staff believes that impacts affordable housing. It seems to me that if through this process that you're able to build an ADU, you know, at some point, they may sell the property, and then that would become an affordable unit, or be another unit that would be added, you know, in terms of what we're doing. Help me to understand how that, that, that this, this option here to would would impact that, that affordability. I'm just not seeing that.
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Lohman, so this is actually due to the cost to build an ADU. So the cost to build an ADU is, right now, the circumstances to build them would be pretty, much larger than it ever has been in the past, and it was already rather expensive. And in the case of like owner-occupied situations where they already own the home, we've kind of like solved, like, not solved, but if the goal is someone to have long-term housing, and some owner owns their home, and they live in their home, they have an ADU that they might use for family members rent out long-term, or say in this case, to do short-term rental, really, the primary use of the property is having someone with a long-term, like, housing opportunity. And then if they were to sell, they may like, may likely, because of the cost of an ADU, that could increase the price that they sell the property at. And with the current housing prices increases like that to give others opportunities to own property, there would be a restriction there. And currently, ADUs can only be rented if the owner lives in the home. So even if someone sold and at a higher price, and someone's like, well, I'll rent both of those, because our current median rents are a great source of revenue because of kind of how high they are, which is kind of like a little bit of a bittersweet fact about that. So there wouldn't be an opportunity to turn that into necessarily two renter opportunities, but ownership and ADU, and then the person buying the home would need to be able to afford the cost to buy it. So it's kind of, it's very layered, but that's why it would kind of impact. I realize I put affordability and affordability for a couple of these. I mean affordability and availability, but it would be primarily an impact on affordability. Where availability, I mean, two new units is great, but then affordability comes in and it. and it, it kind of still plays an impact on how people have access to housing.
Thank you for clarifying that. I'm a little, still a little bit lost on the, on how, how it doesn't impact it, but, but I, I think when you, you use the availability piece, I think I'm starting to follow this a little bit better. Thank you.
Others? Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm actually more of the, in the three and four camp. I think this is, especially when we think about Bloomington and how we, we speak so highly of being the hospitality center of, of the Twin Cities, this to me lines up exactly with that. And then when I think about what Bloomington offers, we offer proximity to, to downtown Minneapolis, to St. Paul. If you've been in Bloomington, the nightlife in Bloomington isn't exactly hopping here. When I choose, when I go out of town to visit places, like where am I choosing? Airbnbs, somewhere close to bars, restaurants, places I can go out. And so when I think about opening this up, what type of people would be wanting to A, rent their place, and what type of people would be coming here to do, to stay here? Lot of business travel and a lot of major events. So when we host the Super Bowl, when we host golf tournaments, and we have NCAA tournaments here, like that's when I see people being able to say, hey, rent my house for three days and, you know, that's my mortgage payment for the next three months. Like that makes sense to me because the, it's limited in who's going to be coming here, who's going to stay here long-term. And I think that has a smaller effect on the affordability piece when we're talking about homeownership and things like that here in Bloomington. So I actually lean more towards the three and four because I think we've heard people speak about it and just the nature of how Bloomington is set up allows us to kind of have both at the same time.
Councilmember Rivas.
I just have a question. What is the impact on the tax revenue for the city based on, on the hospitality and the, and ADU?
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
What is the, the revenue impact on comparing hotel tax revenue to a, an ADU rental? Is it significant? Does it benefit the city more or less, or what is the difference between the two?
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Rivas, so with the tax, I'm sure our finance team, I could pass it along to actually kind of talk a little bit, and our assessing team could just talk a little bit more about that. In conversations with them both, the, there would be, in a policy, there would be a provision in there in order to connect, collect lodging tax on revenue from, that generated from short-term and, short-term rentals. There is a challenge in collecting it, especially there's anecdotal evidence, but enough of it where cities have had difficulty working with platforms in order to get that revenue from them, where they, the platform collects it and then we get it from them. But it has been done, so it could be an option. And sometimes, like assessing had brought up that renting out your home for a certain munder of days in the year, even on a short-term rental side, could change your tax classification for your home, where it could be slightly higher than a residential homestead tax, but it's lower than a hotel tax. So it would be slightly more, but that really kind of depends on how many Airbnbs, or excuse me, short-term rentals, because it doesn't have to be Airbnbs, how many short-term rentals actually come about in the city, you know, what the market demands for it. So it could be not that much, or maybe it's a lot more, but in the sense where we reach critical mass, where we're seeing a lot of revenue there, we might have to worry about other impacts like long-term housing opportunities turning over to short-term rental and being removed from the long-term housing market. So it might, we, we might run into still a challenge we'll have to address in order to make sure that people who want to live here can live here, especially our workers and.
But in other words, we're losing revenue from the hotel industry, right? I mean, anyway you cut it, it's, it lowers the income to the city based on the tax revenue.
By sheer numbers, yes, because we have ten thousand hotel rooms, like forty-six hotels across various price points. I think that in sheer numbers, a short-term rental income at a, or revenue at a level that also doesn't impact our long-term housing may seem very insignificant. It would be something. I'm unfortunately not the finance expert in this case in order to give a more narrow, a bit of information to kind of show, show what the comparison would be. But if you're looking at the hotel and sheer numbers, it won't be as much as that. And there, it, there's a, like, there's still, finance has said, like, sometimes we still have to go to hotels and ask them to, you know, pay their tax. So there is still a little level of investigation there, but they are more centralized. So the efficacy of that is higher than what it would be for a decentralized market.
Thank you. Evening.
Other questions, council? Councilmember Lohman?
Thank you, Mayor. So let's say i- if we went down the, the, the three, four area. Can we cap any of that at all, or is, is that need to be open, open market, marketplace for that? I think I saw you right, we could put a cap on that, okay? And then if we were to open this, the three, four, that would open up this idea of maybe a bed and breakfast type idea. Would that be able to fit in the same category, or is that a separate category altogether?
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Lohman, that would be a separate category. It is defined as a different type of use, and it is a little bit more well-defined than short-term rentals are in the sense of the, what exactly is a bed and breakfast? Usually there's some sort of rules around the meals that are provided and when and how many rooms in a, you know, in a bed and breakfast that could be allowed in, in residential zoning. So it would be a different, it would be a, a different use and wouldn't apply under this transient lodging or lodging that's thirty days or consecutive days or less.
It's just when I hear my, my fellow councilmember talk about, you know, different options, that would be something I would be thinking about if there's a way to kind of, if we were going down that three, four area, that we maybe include that there. So just two, two last things I think here. So, I mean, I look here at, at the map here that you have with all the green there, it seems that there's a lot of cities that are out there that have, have adopted this. And to my, my colleague, and also I'm sure Councilmember Martin would, would say this as well, you know, it looks like the market is really, really hot for this, just in terms of raw numbers. Those are a lot of, a lot of people out there that are, that are, that are doing this now. I, I mean, and you, you might say that, that Minneapolis and St. Paul also has hotels as well. And so I'm just curious about the, really the, the impact that it really has, I mean, you know, to that hospitality side of it. Now, I mean, it's, we're talking single occupancies and maybe up to five. I can't, I can't imagine a person who would, would pick a hotel room would, would, would even look at this market. And so, you know, to my colleague's point, this would open up the marketplace for additional. I understand the impacts around, around affordability and that type of thing, but they, you know, we could cap that, right? I mean, so help me understand why these other cities ha- have just said, no, we're not, we're not going to do that, you know? And how, and when we look at 2016, before that, you know, do we just not have anything at all? You know, and, and why the prohibition at that point? What are some of these other cities saying? If you want to comment on any of those things I said.
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Lohman, so I didn't talk to the cities that had straight prohibitions there. I looked at their ordinance and it was very clear. In some of the cities that I talked to in confirming that did allow it, some of them indicated that even without a cap, they had like seven, three, five, you know? And, and so they were kind of like, or they were silent on short-term rentals altogether. They kind of generally knew where they were more often than not with like lower populations or in conversation with people who wanted to do short-term rentals, they kind of get an idea of where they are. Also, you can look on the platforms and kind of see that in some areas, some of the more outer areas, there weren't that, there wasn't that much demand. And some of the areas where they, there's actually one at the very, the top that's on this map. I talked to someone from, from Coon Rapids, and I talked to someone from Anoka. And the conversation was primarily around the time to administer the program and regulate them was far greater than the benefit that they would see because of demand. And so they just prohibited it. And in some cases, they're trying to, in other prohibitions, they're trying to protect their housing stock. Because availability is also very closely related to affordability. Very low vacancy increases the competition for what's available and drives up prices. So if a short-term rental turns over, or excuse me, a, a housing unit turns over to short-term rental from long-term, that further restricts the mark, the availability of long-term housing to people. So those are kind of linked, and some of those cities have considered that and just said that they didn't want to open the door to that. And that's kind of their prerogative. The state is not, is silent on short-term rentals. The Department of Revenue does talk a little bit about how to report taxes on short-term rentals, but the state doesn't have anything that says the cities have to have them or not have them, or these are the rules that they have to have if they do allow them. So that gives a lot of flexibility to the municipality to make decisions on what their policy looks like, which includes things like caps or how strict, they strictly or otherwise they use the regulatory tools.
So then just finally, Mayor, you know, just I'll make this quick here. So we've got the cap out there. Is, is there a possibility where we could create zones where these items are, would be allowed in the city if we did the three, four and kind of said, hey, we want to keep it around the hospitality and, and put a overlay out there to, to try to kind of say, here's where we want to kind of, kind of have these that are across the street from a commercial area or, or that type of thing? Is that possible to do something like that, or we run a, run a file of some other rule I'm not aware of?
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Lohman, I don't, as far as I can recall, I could look into it, but I don't think because there's not as strict rule, rules about short-term rentals or any rules really about stricter, short-term rentals, except what cities create for them. And some applicability under state law. I mentioned in my report about public accommodations and fair housing, that we could. I think that butts up against resources going into administering and complexity of a policy. And then at that point, it really impacts efficacy of the policy if it's difficult to administer. But it could be done.
Councilmember Carter and then Councilmember Nelson. Councilmember Carter.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you go back to the slide with the options? Thank you. So I will say I am pretty firmly in the one or two. I am vehemently opposed to three and four because we have such a housing crisis, both in terms of affordability and accessibility. We have hardly any homes on the market in Bloomington. And then we hear all the time about people having a hard time being able to afford to live here. And I think if we open up, if we do, if we went the three or four option, it's just going to increase demand from buyers for houses in Bloomington, for people who, this is a business model for them. They buy up homes and they turn them into Airbnbs. They don't live in them. They just flip them and they turn them into Airbnbs, and that just takes one house off the market for people who want to live in Bloomington. And I have, I mean, I have a really serious problem with that, especially as we're considering the impact of youth homelessness, of homelessness. The Twin Cities Metro, I just looked it up, has a hun, they're a hundred and six thousand units away from, or sorry, that's the state. The state is a hundred and six thousand units short of what it actually needs. Three quarters of those are in the metro area. Like I just, I don't know why we would turn over a big, a chunk of our housing supply for short-term rentals when we know people need homes. So that's where I am on that. So I'm, I'm open though to owner present, short-term rentals. I think it is a nice way for people to have a little bit of extra income to make that mortgage payment. And so again, I'm open to that, but again, opposed, absolutely opposed to three and four.
Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate Councilmember Carter's comments there. I, maybe not quite as adamantly opposed, but similarly opposed at least to, to four. And I, I recognize the housing crisis and there's probably some zoning changes and things like that that are a different discussion, but the, I was with Patrick back in the day. I was, yeah, advocating for this because I, I have changed. I, I travel, I travel and I, I use these and, and, but the reality that I've seen in the shift in that timeframe is that almost every community that I am aware of that has a significant number of short-term rentals is tightening their restrictions. They are going back on what they did. It is not working for their communities. And they're really looking at that because one, it's taking housing units out of there. And so anything that takes an opportunity away from a family to live in a house, in my mind, makes no sense. So that takes four off the board. Three maybe, but it's still very, very questionable. Two, I could probably get there. But the reality is, is I would really like to stay more focused on how we get more of these ADUs for longer-term rentals. We had in our, I was going to say one weekly, but the, the Bloomington this week, that we've now got two. Yay. Of them, you know? And I mean, we, we kept making changes, you know? I would like to see more of an emphasis that helps those homeowners that are looking to create income on a house they own so that they can stay in that house. We've heard from people and I, I, I think it's legitimate. I mean, they've lived in a long time, things have gotten expensive, they're looking to offset some income, you know? But I would rather them look at, you know, have someone in there for three months, you know, which I think you can do now. And it, the question is what are the rules? How much money do you have to spend to do that? Whereas, you know, my assumption, and, and maybe I'm wrong on this, but some of these short-term rentals are, you just rent out the bedroom for three nights versus, hey, if you're going to have someone for three months, now you gotta have separate access, you gotta have, you know, a separate kitchen, you gotta put all these expenses in there. How could we be somewhere compromised in the middle? And I may be misunderstanding the rules. I would like to be more focused on how we create places for people to live within Bloomington, providing opportunities for people to supplement their housing costs by renting out a portion of their home without having extraordinary expenses to modify it to do that. And I, I could probably get to renting out a room occasionally. I mean, we're not going to get the Super Bowl anytime again soon. And if I recall correctly, that's where a lot of this conversation came from. People wanted to make money during that time and hey, hey, good for you, that totally makes sense to me. I'm not discouraging that, but I don't know that we change all of the rules for, for that in my mind. And again, I was much more in favor of this at the time, but I've seen the impact. I've seen so many communities going back on this. I mean, even the small community my parents live in, they're looking at prohibiting it. You know, they live on a lake up in northern Minnesota, and it's such a pain for the community to tolerate and regulate that they're looking at rolling it back. And, you know, just look at any market that has done it, they are, I'm not saying getting rid of it, but they are really seriously questioning it. And then to Councilmember Carter's point of taking that house out of an opportunity for a family to live there, and look, I get some, sometime that's going to be rental. And, you know, I've said this many times, I own a rental house, but there's a family living in it. It's a place for them to live and, and be part of the community and all of that. It's a lot different than someone just staying here. And, and so, and I'm normally very much a property rights person. The question here is, do we, this is a business question. Do we allow a business to operate in this way in a residential neighborhood? We wouldn't open up a automotive repair shop, would we open up a hotel room in a neighborhood? And that, that's the question. So anyways, I could get to two.
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Nelson, I do want to confirm that if it's someone rents and it's thirty days, like a month, completely allowed now, you get a rental license and you can do it. Also, I, I'm also the project lead for the missing middle housing study item session that will be upcoming. And ADUs and adjustments we can make for ADUs to make them much more feasible are on the list to review. I already have a ton of ideas that I want to present to you in order to make that streamlined and, and possible. And then also, I am, in order to understand a little bit more- Um, and then also, I am, in order to understand a little bit more what option two would look like if someone's just renting out their room, um, uh, since this would be in EH's realm, Lynn can describe a little bit more about what that actually would look like as far as how the city would be involved in that. And I thought that would be helpful.
Hello, Council.
Good evening.
So, back into, be, prior to 2014, we used to rent, or issue rental licenses to room rentals. So if you had long-term roommates, um, in your house, we actually had like fifty-five of them at the time, and they were pretty much worthless for us to go out and inspect, because, you know, the owner lived there and they had housemates, and you're looking at a bedroom, right? And you're looking at a shared kitchen and probably, probably shared bathroom. So, um, you know, when I look at short-term rentals, um, as being, you know, renting a room for a night, or a weekend, or whatever, where the owner lives there, I, I see it as being kind of similar. I don't know that it really impacts the neighbors, or it's that different than having, you know, long-term roommates, right? Um, so I just wanted to share that with you, that we definitely have houses out in our community where the owner lives there, and they rent out, they probably have up to three roommates, and, or they, you know, might rent out the basement, and it's not necessarily an ADU, because I might rent it to a couple or something. We don't license those, we're not regulating those currently, because the owner lives there and has control of the property. And, um, I think that is kind of something we rested on. We don't get a lot of complaints about this either, so I don't, I kind of see it as operating kind of the same way. It, it could be out in the community and you might not even know, right? As long as the owner lives there.
Thank you on that. Councilmember, you asked a specific question related to this?
Yeah, just a comment in regards to, to that specifically. Um, and there happened to be in my area, a few houses that actually have quite a number of people living in there, and I know it's not being regulated, but I, I also have gotten a few emails with concerned residents around the area, because there are a number of cars parked in the driveway and sometimes obstructing the sidewalk. Um, so it does create some problems if you allow it without any regulations. Um, I mean, as a matter of fact, I think I have a couple of emails that show pictures of vehicles parked, uh, not properly parked in, in those houses. Uh, so, you know, to say that it doesn't affect, uh, the neighbors around it, uh, I think is not, um, a, a good, uh, judgment on that, because it actually does. Um, you know, I happen to drive by just to take a look and see if they're, uh, real. Um, um, the reason I'm saying this is because it, it, it doesn't look good when you see a number of vehicles parked in a driveway that fits probably two under regular circumstances, and now you see five vehicles parked in the grass. Obviously, the owner probably lives there, and he doesn't mind that the, their vehicles parked in their, on their lawn, uh, and that's okay, I guess, but, uh, it just doesn't look good at all. Um, so, you know, I, I wanted to say this, I also echo, uh, Councilmember, uh, Nelson and Carter on regards to their opinions on this, because I, it, it just doesn't, to me, I personally wouldn't rent to somebody that I don't know, to allow him to have, to leaving a room in my house. I just feel that way. I don't know, a lot of people probably feel that way as, also. Uh, but, uh, in regards to that, there are a lot of houses in that area, that because we don't have any regulations, they just have a lot of people living in those homes. And it's a fact.
We do have those.
Councilmember Alessandro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I, I do believe we have regulations about the number of cars that can be in a driveway, and that doesn't have an impact on whether they're a homeowner, or a renter, or renting a person a room. If there's too many cars in the driveway, because I believe if I'm correct, it's four, right? Yeah. So you could call and report those people, and Environmental Health will take care of it, anytime. Doesn't matter if it's a rental or a homeowner itself. Um, so we do have regulations around that. Um, he, here's where my head's at on this. Um, the, to me, it feels like if, if we have somebody who is interested in renting a room in their house, whether they're doing it for three days, or they're doing it for three months, shouldn't make a difference to us. That's why I'm in support of number two, and I think that Lynn is suggesting that it's not going to impact her ability to do this in, you know, uh, regulation, depending on how we do it. If we don't do it today, if I'm a, I, I have, in fact, without any input at all from the city, I had somebody living in my house, uh, over the holidays, uh, last year. So from, you know, November through February, somebody was in my basement. Now, they were a friend of mine, and they needed a place to live, and I put them there, and I never told anybody, and they were just fine, right? Who cares? Especially if she would have paid me some money to be there, like, that'd have been money that would help me pay the rent, or pay the mortgage. Like, I, I, I'm just struggling with the idea that we wouldn't, for, for, for people who would, I, I am with you all on the owner never present piece. I get it, I've seen it happen in millions of places where people come in and they buy up the homes, and then they use them in this way. You know, I already have a problem with us, like, I, I would prefer us to have a, a, a cap on the number of homes that any one entity can own in our city, frankly. Uh, that would be like, good for me. I think we do have some, um, uh, and you can correct me if I'm wrong on this, Lynn, but I do believe we have a couple of, of, of property owners that have more than twenty homes that they rent out. That would be where I would solve this problem, right? If you're going to rent homes, um, you should have, there should be a cap on the number that you as an entity can own. Now, maybe that's not something we talk about right now, because that can lead us slip, down a slippery slope as well. Um, but that already happens today, is my point. My point is that we didn't do a good job of making sure that a bunch of housing stock went to renters as opposed to went to, to homeowners. So, you know, that bridge ha, that bridge has been burned, maybe already. So, you know, what, what, what do we want to do, right? Having somebody have the ability to rent out a room in their house, or rent their basement out in the house for a couple of days during big events, seems really okay to me, and I don't know why we would over-regulate that from a property owner perspective, in my opinion.
Can I summarize here? From what I've heard from people, three and four are, nobody is supporting three and four. Well, the exception of, uh, with, of SAW, okay.
I'll define the gap.
Uh, I, I, I won't support three or four. I just think that is a recipe for disaster if the owner is not present. Uh, and I hesitate on two, just because I can envision more than one situation where it's owner-present, wink, wink, and, uh, and then they're not, and then we end up with issues there. But I could be talked into two. Uh, but I, uh, and, and actually, I would lean all the way to the, the prohibition, just because I, I don't want to see that. One thing we haven't talked, we haven't talked about a couple of things. I mean, if, if we do anything, there's going to be a staff impact. I mean, Lynn said there's not, you know, a whole lot, but there will be a staff impact. And then the next time the budget comes around and we add half a staff member to do this, and we get people saying, wait a minute, we can't add more staff members. We said, yes, you could do this. And then the other thing, um, uh, this notion of, of, um, competition in our hospitality industry, which I'm surprised no one has brought up. Um, I mean, and we've heard from residents, well, you're, you're just protecting the hospitality industry. Well, yeah, we are, because they're kind of a big chunk of our economy here in the city of Bloomington, and, and I, you know, I, I'm, I'm cognizant of that, and I want to make sure we do protect them in that way. So, uh, I mean, I, I would lean toward one, I could go toward two if we, we had enough nodding heads for that. Uh, but I think three and four are, are off the table from my standpoint, just because I think without owners in the home, it, as, uh, Councilmember Nelson said, it just sets itself up for, for bad things to happen. Councilmember Lomond?
Thank you, Mayor. The only point I would make is that if we were going to do this, three and four would be my preference, but this is very low on my totem pole.
Okay.
It, 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 it doesn't even crest the top twenty-five. Like, I would prefer to work on the missing middle house piece, more rental housing, more homeownership opportunities, like, that is what I want to focus on. Um, but if we're in the conversation of like, let's do this and move forward, that's where I would lean that way. And so, I, I'm not stuck in one spot, but it's very low.
So, are, are, do we have enough folks? I, I, do we have enough folks comfortable with number two, to, to move forward on number two? I mean, are we comfortable there? I'm, I'm seeing a lot of shrugs and hesitant hands.
I'm the only reason I'm here.
Yes, I am. Yep, and I'm, I'm only seeing one. So, uh, I think what we're hearing here is, uh, we, we stick with our current policy of prohibition. Is that, is, are people comfortable with that?
I am not.
I, I understood. Okay. Councilmember Carter?
I'm just processing. I mean, I really am open to number two. I guess I really liked what you said, Councilmember, where I'm like, in the grand scheme of all the things that we could do to, um, impact housing availability and affordability, and like, things that you have to prioritize in your work plan and your time, this is not super high on my list of priorities. Um, with that said, I do like giving people the option to rent out a room if it helps them, like, for the short term, um, if it helps them with income, but, again, it's just not probably super high on my priority list, so.
Well, and I will say, as we've been sitting here talking, I pulled up Airbnb, and I found about a half dozen room rentals in Bloomington. So, to your point, Councilmember Alessandro, it's happening. And, uh, so I, I think it, we, we don't necessarily need to endorse or, or support it as a, as a community, but it's happening, and people are making extra money off of it, without question. Councilmember Lomond, quickly here, let's get.
Yeah, I guess where I'd rather spend my money is on what Councilmember Nelson talked about, that those ADUs, and put our energy all in there. If it, if it's happening, we could just turn a blind eye to it, you know?
There are people who are not doing it, though, because we did try to prohibit it. So, can we just remove the prohibition and not talk about it then? That would be ideal.
We, we have far too many of those things going on in town right now, including long-term parking at our hotels, uh, which is another thing that we, uh, probably should talk about, but.
We expressly prohibited it, and there are people who want to follow the rules, who would like to do this, and they're not doing it, because we expressly prohibited it. So if we really don't care, which is what I'm hearing people say, well, let's just remove the prohibition and let the, the market do the market thing.
Well, I, I, I asked the crowd here, and, and I saw one hand go.
But that wasn't the question. The, the, the question wasn't that at all, which I'm just saying, like.
The question was whether or not we wanted to go to two, owner-present, guest room-sweet.
I'm saying not regulated at all, just, i- i- if I understand correctly, there are several people in this map that you have that don't have anything on the books one way or the other. Is that correct?
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Alessandro, that is correct. Of course, I don't know the impact that that has had on their communities.
Understood, understood. I completely understand. Uh, we, we, for some reason, we put it on the books.
Mm-hmm.
You're the only one here, I think, that was probably there.
We put it on the books, I remember the conversation we had. Yes. Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I, you get, I don't know why we put it on the books, I guess is my question.
Mm-hmm. Councilmember Carter?
I mean, if we didn't have any prob, wouldn't that just be four? We'd just be allowing whatever.
My point is that it's already happening.
Yeah, it's not happening a significant amount, though.
No, that's right. And so, if we gave people, if, 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 well, uh, uh, it doesn't matter.
Well, uh, what, what I heard, Council, was, I mean, I, I, we asked the question, I'll ask, ask it again. I mean, do we want to stick with one, or do we want to go with two? So now, you're.
But I'm also fine with one or two.
Mr. Verboogie?
Uh, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, I just want to chime in on the, whether it's happening or not. Uh, I would put it in the category of numerous things that happen that violate our ordinances and our environmental health team, uh, when made aware, uh, enforce against the, the ordinances. So, when Lynn's team, uh, sees, because they do occasionally scan, uh, and when they see something, they will, uh, send, um, uh, friendly, uh, notices, uh, and then less friendly if they don't get response, right, Lynn?
Yes, uh, Mayor, uh, Mr. Ver- Verboogie, um, we do do enforcement, um, and you can look at some of these sites, it's kind of, they don't give you their address, they might not give you any pictures of the outside. Um, sometimes it's, uh, difficult to track down, but we rarely see, you know, we periodically run all the platforms, and we rarely see more than a handful. And if we can't readily find it, we're not going to put a ton of effort to try and locate it. And some people play games with us, too, that we, you know, they're like, well, you know, they have it all booked for a month. So, it's, you know, thirty-day rental. Um, I think the thing to be cognizant about is, in the transient lodging, there are some things we don't want, and those are like, more like renting out beds, crash pads, um, things that completely take a housing unit off the market, and, you know, do have a negative impact on the community. And we've been enforcing pretty heavy-handedly on those.
Thank you. Councilmember Nelson, now let's, let's get to wrap up on this. We've still got two big things to talk about yet tonight.
Yeah, I just wanted to, um, just make one distinction also, because there are some of these that are in like multifamily, and we have an office issue, and when we look at that missing middle, would this, that all be part of, um, that conversation for some multifamily properties? As an example, if you go up like on the North Shore to Superior Shore, somebody owns that, but you rent it, it's in the pool, you call and make a reservation at somebody's, what they own, those types of things in multifamily, where they wouldn't otherwise be, um, somewhere that people lived. Um, so anyways, um, I think we're going the right direction, and just sticking with where we're at. Um, so, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have consensus on that, sticking where we're at? One? All right. Thank you. Thank you much.
Thank you very much.
Item five point three on the agenda, maximizing sales tax revenues, exploring the impact of general obligation bonds for Bloomington Forward projects. Ms. Bergman, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council.
Is Lori on, is she joining you? Nope. Oh, she's online, there she is. Okay, there she is.
She had the good sense not to go out in the weather tonight. I don't think that, I don't think that's truly what's motivating her, but still, good sense. Lori, I have the clicker, and I'm ready whenever you are.
Okay. Mayor and Council, um, Elizabeth Bergman from Baker Tilly, our municipal advisor, and I are gonna walk you through some of the, um, we, we, uh, kind of tested out different scenarios of how we would issue for our three tranches of, um, debt, for the Bloomington Ice Garden, for, um, the Health and Wellness Center, and for, um, Nine Mile Creek Corridor. Um, Elizabeth, do you want to move to the next slide? Um, oops. Nope. It said, it, it, it's, um.
It's touchy.
Yes. It wants us to move ahead so that we can move on to the next one, um, subject. So, um, what we, um, planned is a hundred and fifty-five million of the capital projects for those three projects, um, and they were based off of, um, twelve and a half million of annual revenue, uh, expected, based on, um, the twenty twenty-four collection to date. So, just to give you, um, an idea of what we have collected there to date, um, April's amount came in on July tenth, uh, May's numbers came in on May tenth, or August tenth, and if we looked at, um, just the April numbers, those April numbers calculated out to the twelve and a half million, and, um, the other one would be, yeah, if we looked at the May numbers, that calculates out, you know, just multiplying it by twelve, to just under fourteen million, um, in numbers would come in, um, annually. So, just averaging, you know, from what we received so far, we're at about thirteen-two, but we based everything on the, um, hundred and fifty-five million at twelve point five. Um, and Elizabeth might go into a little bit of how we're going to prepare for our credit rating call on that, um, but there's a long history of just sales taxes by city, um, in the state of Minnesota, so for credit rating calls, um, we, we can prove that history of sales taxes in Bloomington. Our piece is just another half percent on top of that, so there's already a history on that. Um, we were hoping, on the extension office reports, to have that achieved by now. They are still reworking some of my questions, so hopefully, um, I will get positive answers, looks that way, and you will have that report, um, in Bloomington this week, by the end of the week. So moving on to the next one, I'm going to turn it over to Elizabeth for the next couple of slides.
Thanks, thanks very much. So, yes, we, uh, in November, voters in Bloomington obviously voted in this new sales tax, and we've been working with the Finance Office to prepare for these projects and how to finance them for a couple of years now. Um, but I think the main, the, the, the really good news is, the revenue that is expected to be generated from the sales tax, on a very conservative basis, you just heard about that, uh, is sufficient in order to repay the, the bonds necessary to, uh, do these projects. So, uh, revenues sufficient for debt service, always a good place to be. Um, so with that, we kind of talked about how it is that we can issue debt in order to finance the projects. And there's two ways that you can do the sales tax revenue bonds. And there's two ways that you can do the sales tax revenue bonds. One is that you can have a sales tax revenue bond that's backed only by sales tax revenues. So if for some reason, sales tax revenues were to come in less than what was projected in the, based on this year's revenues and what we're getting from the U of M extension, you wouldn't be obligated to make any more payment than what sales tax revenues were, were coming in. The other alternative is to put a general obligation pledge on there, so that would be like the regular bonds you issue, where you say, we're going to issue these bonds, and the City of Bloomington stands behind these with our full faith and credit. So if sales tax revenue, sales tax revenues, excuse me, were insufficient to cover debt service, the City of Bloomington would need to legally find a way to repay that debt. So those are fundamentally the two different choices we have. And, you know, sales tax revenues, revenue bonds are kind of new in, across Minnesota. I mean, not entirely new. St. Paul, for instance, has had them for a couple decades. But most cities are going with a general obligation pledge. But there's an opportunity also to just do straight-up sales tax revenues. The advantage to those is that members of your community have said, yes, we'll have this sales tax be put in place, and expect that the debt be repaid by the sales tax revenues. I want to stress again that, in both of these situations, there's one, there's a difference between the security, which is what you're pledging to bondholders, and the repayment stream. And in both cases, the repayment stream is the sales tax revenues, because we believe there's sufficient revenues. So, but there are a couple differences. The main thing is that with sales tax revenues, because those are variable and a little bit unpredictable, unlike property taxes, the market and the rating agencies expect that the amount of revenues you collect is in excess of the debt service you're going to pay. So that's called coverage. Fundamentally, if you have $1 of debt service that you're paying, they want to see maybe, let's call it 160 cents come in, so $1.60 come in, one times six times coverage. So that makes it so that you, it's, it's a little harder to leverage the sales tax, because you can't do a dollar for dollar the way you could if you did a general obligation bond. So, that's in this chart here of that coverage requirement. If you do a sales tax revenue bond, you'll need to collect more than your debt service. We say 1.6 times is the target here, and I can talk a little bit about that. That's with regard to rating agency methodologies and also our understanding of the market. If you did a general obligation pledge, if you have one times, that's fine for the market and for the rating agencies, because the expectation is, if the revenues don't come in strongly, then the city will, will make up the difference. Couple other differences between sales tax and general obligation bonds are the expected rating. So obviously, Bloomington has that three triple A's, that very enviable credit rating. Sales tax revenue bonds would be rated based on a different methodology. Again, the real main difference is, those revenues are variable and uncertain, and our expectation with that 1.6 times coverage would be a double A minus, based on the methodologies and our understanding of the market. So kind of a couple differences of the ways that you can finance the bonds. So we looked at all of the options, really, about each of those ways, and how we could put together a plan that allows you to do three things. Next slide. Three, three things that we really looked at as the goals of, of our financing plan. One is to maximize the proceeds, to have enough money to do your projects. Two is to minimize the use of the general obligation pledge, because of, of that obligation that the city is making, and to the degree to which you don't need to put taxpayers' pledge on the line. We want to minimize that. And then three is to try to be responsive to changes in rates and sales tax collections. As I said, we've been monitoring this for a couple of years, and interest rates over that time have changed. So it's, it's great that while interest rates have changed, the envelope is still enough to support the projects. And that's partly, I think, because the Finance Office has been exceptionally conservative in, in the approach that we've taken, the approach they've taken, and looked at interest rates in a, in a very pessimistic kind of way, which in this case is, is a good thing. So, so those are the three priorities that we have put in place, in terms of thinking about how do we put together a financing strategy for the bonds. So we'll need to do a combination of general obligation pledge and sales tax revenue pledge. So we want to maximize a sales tax revenue pledge to that 1.6 times. So issue as much sales tax revenue bonds as we can, while still showing 1.6 times coverage, and then do the remainder of the debt as a general obligation pledge. And that breaks out to about 36% with general obligation pledge, and then 64% with pure sales tax revenue bonds. So the idea would be, the Bloomington Ice Garden issue that's coming this fall, we would do as pure sales tax revenue bonds. And then the 2025 issue for the Community Health and Wellness Center, we do a combination of each. And then the third issue in 2026, we do straight general obligation bonds. The good news about that is that we can continue to watch those sales tax revenues. If we have some accumulation of sales tax revenues over that period, we may have to issue less debt for the 2026 issue. And also, the interest rate will, will impact how we, how we can break out the 25 issue between sales tax and general obligation. So that's that way in which it's responsive to what's happening with the market, both in terms of sales tax and in terms of interest rates. So it's really a combination, and it's a senior subordinate structure. So the first revenues that come in will repay the sales tax-only bonds, and then any revenues that are left over after that will pay, pay the general obligation bonds, the subordinate bonds. So that's, that is the recommendation and the plan. Moving on to the next slide, there was some references about rating, ratings and the rating implications. We did some analysis looking at which rating agency we should go with for this deal, and how to maximize the rating vis-à-vis coverage and overall categories. All rating agencies at this point have to publish methodologies. So they put forward, this is how we're going to rate your bonds. So we use the methodologies from S and P and Moody's, and looked at which one was more favorable. You can see there's a little chart down on the bottom left. We just did some sensitivities if you had two times coverage, so $2 of revenue for every dollar of, of debt service you had, or if we just had one times coverage, and then 1.6 in the middle, kind of the sweet spot there. You can see that for S and P, we can go to 1.6 times coverage and still be at a double A minus, whereas at Moody's, we would go to an A at that level. So overall, there's a little bit more flexibility with S and P. You can kind of have coverage in a little bit different, a little lower, and it's a little less sensitive. So the recommendation is to do S and P as a rating here. And there's some information here about the categories. When S and P rates, sales tax bonds, they look at really three things. One, revenue volatility, so that, you know, was something I was talking about before, how stable revenues are. And in general, sales tax revenues are very widely accepted in the market and thought to be pretty stable. The coverage and the liquidity, as well as economic fundamentals. And we all know Bloomington's economic fundamentals are judged by the rating agencies very positively. As mentioned before, because this is a new sales tax, and there'll be a limited track record, we'll need to build a case about the strength of Bloomington's economy and the predictability of sales tax revenues. Historic revenues that were pointed out in the first slide by Ms. Connie Schuler will be one thing that we can point to. While you haven't been actually taxing those sales, we can track those sales, so they can see the strong sales in Bloomington, as well as lodging tax and admissions tax, that gives some idea about the economic vitality of the area. And we'll be working together to put together a formal rating presentation for S and P, to have them understand what this, what the goals of the projects are, and how vital and dynamic the economy in Bloomington is. So I think with that, I'll give it back to you, Lori.
Yep. You want to advance the slide to the next one?
Yep, I sure will.
So, right now, the project for the Bloomington Ice Garden, bid documents were released last week, and they should be back in a couple of weeks and evaluated, and back to the City Council for authorization. We will also have a formal authorization to bond for the Bloomington Ice Garden on the 30th council meeting. We would have our credit rating call the week of October 7th. We would sell the bonds on the 28th, and the proceeds would come in pretty much a, a month later, and the interfund loan for the Bloomington Ice Garden would be repaid during the accounting period of, you know, before the end of the year. And I believe actual Phase 1 project activities would start still this year to utilize the funds that are coming in from the bond proceeds. I know Elizabeth did touch on, I mean, if we want to go to the next slide, as we're getting into discussion, that several years back when we came upon the, you know, came to the number of 155 million, a lot of that had been listed as general obligation sales tax bonds. The goal for the Finance Department and for the city is always to limit our exposure to general obligations, because if, you know, should COVID happen again, we want to be as protected as possible from that type of activity. So, the, the percentage of using a portion as GO and the majority of the portion as sales tax bonds is our current strategy. And as Elizabeth mentioned, as market conditions change and interest rates change over the next 12 months for the Bloomington Ice, for the Community Health and Wellness Center, that percentage could be reduced even more. So we'll, we'll track the sales taxes coming in, we'll track, track the interest rates, we'll see what the market appetite is for things. But hopefully, we can even reduce the GO portion of that's even more a year from now and two years from now. So with that, Elizabeth and I are here for any questions you may have on what we are proposing for kind of a bond strategy for these sales taxes.
Well, thank you. Thank you both. It's very well thought out, very well considered, and appreciate the time and effort that went into that, because it makes a lot of sense. And glad, glad there are people like you to think about things like that, because goodness knows I couldn't. Mr. Verboogie, question?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. For Ms. Bergman or our CFO, we put a lot of pride in our triple, triple A rating, and it's probably good to clarify, just because the sales tax bonds have a rating that is not triple A rated, does not affect the city's credit position, correct?
That's correct. It's just a, a different, a different credit in the market. So, the rating agency will consider the overall debt of Bloomington. So when we're looking at the general obligation, they will realize that they're sales tax revenue bonds. But we don't anticipate it would have any impact on the triple A rating.
And you said something important there. You said the, the credit agencies obviously consider Bloomington's overall debt. And given the, these projects that we're doing now, and, and projects that we're doing with our Park System Master Plan, and looking at some other big projects we've got coming up, are we, are we nudging closer to a possibility of not being in favorable position with our credit agencies because of the amount of debt that the city has?
I'll let you take the first stab, Lori, and I'm happy to, happy to nuance it as, at you, as you wish.
Mayor and Council, what is generally coming in the CIP, and what's always been in the CIP for the last couple of years, we have modeled a, a debt service schedule for those, and even though our debt ratios do increase, because we are putting capital projects out there for a fleet garage, or a fire station, or park improvements, our debt ratios are still well below a lot of our neighboring communities. We have a very low debt rate right now, and we are just putting in needed infrastructure over the next five to 10 years. And unless serious environmental controls outside of Bloomington Council and staff's realm happen, our credit rating should continue to be a triple A.
I'd say that debt is one of the things that is highlighted in the credit opinion about something that's very well managed from Bloomington.
Good. That's, I'm glad to hear that. Mr. Verboogie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And if I may, and I want to acknowledge Elizabeth's comment there, because that is, and, and hats off to our CFO, her, her debt model is something to behold, when you have a chance to see the spreadsheet. The, the thing I would add to what Lori responded is that we have two different controls in terms of the amount of debt that we can take on. There's a statutory limitation, and there is a charter limitation. And so you'll recall that, for example, with our Park System Master Plan, we are issuing chartered GO bonds, based on the authority that's granted within our city charter, and there's a limitation on that. And we're not, we're not close to bumping up on that number currently, and we're not close to bumping up on our statutory limit either. Is that safe to say, Lori?
That is very safe to say.
Good. Thank you for that clarification. Appreciate it. Council, questions on this? Comments? All right. Well, very good. Looking forward to the discussion as it proceeds here, and, and the ultimate issuance, and, and see where we are in, in late October.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good night. Get home safely, everyone.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda, Council, we'll move to item 5.4, our City Council Policy and Issue Update. And I will kick us off just talking about our council listening session this evening. We had four speakers this evening. Brian Wolf talked about the educational value of the Nine Mile Creek Corridor and Central Park, and brought us through an interesting discussion there. Sally Ness was in front of us again this week, talked a bit about lighting at Darrell Farouk and the parking lots, but also then asked questions about some police reports from, I believe, six, five or six years ago, as to why her name appeared in all those police reports, or not reports, actually just call, police calls back and forth regarding, regarding the call that took place. We, we heard from Sherry and her concerns about the fiber optic installation in her neighborhood, and as we've talked about before, we do have a number of those, and we are trying to address those as we can, in terms of some of the, the, under, some of the work quality that is, is under the, the standards that we are setting here in the City of Bloomington, and making sure that we're able to address those. And then Pat Greenbacher talked again about the Health and Wellness Center. We had a good conversation about the allocation of space, the cost, and the eventual cost of use of the center by the different interest groups that were obviously interested, and, and, and will be part of our Health and Wellness Center community. So, those were our speakers at the council listening session. Once again, a, a good listening session, heard a lot of good things from folks. I do not have anything else this evening. Mr. Verboogie, do you have anything to add?
Mr. Mayor, I do not.
Council, anything to add to our, anything to add to our council policy and issue update? I am seeing shaking heads. All right. Then, Council, we're going to move to item 5.5, and I mentioned this earlier when we were talking Agenda. We're going to move into closed session to discuss our fire station acquisition discussion. State law says that cities and public entities can move into closed session for a variety of reasons, not very many, but a variety, including personnel discussions, or negotiations, or negotiations about possible purchases and so on. And so this is one of those options, and one of those opportunities to move into closed session. And we will be doing that. We will, we will offer a resolution to move into closed session, go into closed session, and we will ask anybody not associated with this discussion to leave the City Council chambers. We will then have a discussion. We will not take a vote in closed session. We will come out of closed session, and we will adjourn the meeting then. Did I get that right, Ms. Manderscheid?
Mayor members, yes, you did. The one thing I'd add is that the WebEx will go, if anyone's watching, I don't know if they are, but if anyone is listening in, the WebEx will sort of go quiet for a while, and then, well, when we come back, it'll come back on, to adjourn the meeting.
Very good.
And then if there's any action that's taken out of the closed session, that will be taken in open meeting.
In the open session. So with that, Council, I'm going to move, that we adopt a resolution directing the closure of this public meeting of the City Council, and go into a closed session. Motion in the second by Councilmember Muah to go into closed session. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries 7-0. We will head into closed session, and we will again return to the air once we are moving back into open session to close the meeting tonight.
Can you record please?
Sure.
Council, we are back in open session. Maybe we'll wait just a moment. Councilmember Revas to return quickly here.
Aye.
Here he comes.
(laughing).
Council, I would move that we take action consistent with the discussion in the closed session.
Second.
Motion and a second for the council to take action with the discussion in the closed session. No further discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. One final thing if we could do tonight. Chief Seal, if you could give us an update on the megastorm that came rolling through here earlier.
Well, it wasn't really a megastorm. The two things I want to address is there was damage in the community. Most of it was downed trees and power lines, large branches, several streets blocked with downed trees. Public works have been notified and they're out trying to clear those. XL Energy, of course, is impacted in a wide area, so I can't say how quickly those downed lines will get repaired, but they're working on those as well. No injuries that we know of. I am sure that once the light of day comes, that there may be very possible that there's some structural damage, but nothing that was called in to us for structural damage. So, right now, everything we've seen is trees, tree on a car, and a few other things like that, but no injuries. The other thing I would like to say is many of you probably heard the sirens go off, and that was not planned. The sirens went off based upon a National Weather Service alert that said there was the potential for 70 mile an hour winds. So, the sirens should not have gone off based upon that information. The sirens, to give you a hint, automatically go off if there is tornado touchdown or tornado sided, funnel cloud sided, or if straight line winds hit 80 miles an hour, they automatically go off. When straight line winds are approaching 70 miles an hour, we have the ability to, the county has the ability to send the alert out and alert the sirens based upon conditions. Tonight, there are mesonet weather stations that they have located around the country, which Bloomington has one, registered only about 50 mile an hour winds, which is still plenty strong winds and obviously enough to knock down trees, but it would not have generally necessitated a siren alert, just so you know. They are trying to figure out why the sirens alerted based upon the National Weather Service message. What I can tell you is, is that the software that runs the system is what IT likes to call legacy software, so it's old, and that's part of the problem. That's actually set to be replaced, I think, in 2026, but that might happen sooner now. And with that, I think we've just had a lot of runs, but that's normal for storms. And a fair amount of heavy rain for a while, and lightning strikes, but no lightning strikes on structures that we know of, so.
Council, any quick questions for the chief?
Thank you.
Well, thank you, and thank your folks for the work they're doing tonight and will continue to do through the night, I'm sure, so thank you very much. Council, that concludes our business. With no further items, I will look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We have a motion.
Second.
Second to adjourn. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned seven zero. Thank you much for the discussion tonight, council. Thank you to staff. Thanks to everybody who tuned in this evening, and I hope everybody made it through the storm okay. Thanks.